The City of Riverbank Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, January 19th, 2016 will come to order. Call to order?
Chair Hughes here. Commissioner McKenney?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
And Commissioner Vilepiddois?
Here.
Conflict of interest? Any Planning Commission authority member and staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered are to declare their conflict. Any conflicts? Moving forward, number one, public comments, no action to be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please address the entire Planning Commission Board. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, moving forward to the number two consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commissioner member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Item 2A, posting of the agenda. Item 2B, approval of the agenda. Item 2C, approval of the minutes.
For approval.
I second it.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vilepiddois?
Number three, public notice. We will be opening up the public hearing. Item 3.1, Patterson Road Plan Line Project Description. The proposed resolution will recommend to the City Council approval of the interim and ultimate plan lines for Patterson Road between Rozelle Avenue to the east and Claus Road to the east in compliance with the City of Riverbank 2005 to 2025 general plan. The recommendation, I'll pass over to Donna Kenny, please.
The recommendation that Planning Commission approves Resolution 2016-001 recommending to the City Council the approval of the interim and ultimate plan lines for Patterson Road between Rozelle to the west, Claus Road to the east, in compliance with the City of Riverbank 2005-2025 general plan. The proposed plan is an implementation strategy to comply with the Riverbank General Plan EIR as well as the downtown specific plan EIR. No sequo is necessary for the proposed plan line adoption as the intended action sets forth a long-term plan to comply with policies set by the City Council. And tonight we have Mr. John Anderson presenting this item.
Mr. Anderson, please state your particulars for the audience.
Thank you, Donna. My name is John Anderson, contract planner with City of Riverbank. I'm chairperson, members of the commission. This is a project, quite frankly, the City of Riverbank's been working on for almost 25 years, and that's to develop a comprehensive strategy for what Patterson Road might look like. As we all know, that we're very active in applying for both state and federal grants, and we're very frugal in spending the dollars that we receive as well as local dollars. But in this case, we need to put together a long-term plan that allows us a strategy to be able to improve Patterson Road in conformance with implementation strategies that have been developed as part of the general plan and as part of the downtown specific plan. You know, Patterson Road is not an easy corridor. The city has a number of different obstacles along that corridor. Rideaway widths vary from 55 feet, you know, on the narrow side, you know, up to 80 feet of rideaway. We have, you know, up to two different railroad crossings. We have a number of future signalized intersections that would have to take place, and all of which, you know, long-term allow for adequate pedestrian and vehicular traffic and flow, you know, east to west. This corridor is used by the residents. It's used by commercial and industrial traffic. It's a vital link for Riverbank, not only internally but also externally for trips coming from either Modesto or Escalon or from Oakdale. So this is a big deal. We're not building it, we're setting a plan. Individually, as a city has money, just like with the Rozelle-Patterson Road intersection, the city will have a plan to move forward and implement the rideaway to the best of their ability. The big constraint we have with this roadway segment, quite frankly, is the fact that we have a considerable amount of rideaway that's set aside for railroad purposes, either owned and/or managed by BNSF or owned and they're managed by Sierra Railroad. They have a number of infrastructure components, which I'll go through a slideshow and show you, but it's obvious that they have switch gears and they have, you know, signal arms and, you know, all kinds of apparatus that, you know, lies in the path of any kind of future plan line and development of a wider rideaway. What we know from the environmental evaluation that was done both with the general plan and also done with the downtown specific plan is that Patterson Road needs to be four lanes of travel, and right now, really, we only have two lanes of travel. To get the four lanes of travel, what we're suggesting is part of this ultimate design is that we would need the cooperation of BNSF and Sierra Railroad for 20-foot of easement and/or license agreement with those entities in order to achieve the ultimate goal and objective for this rideaway corridor. So that's kind of where we are now. This whole process has been vetted in the public a number of times. It's very important that, you know, the people that reside along this corridor be given an opportunity to participate in this discussion as well as discussion in front of the City Council before a final decision is made. Many of their concerns that they've raised through either public workshops that have been held, of which there's been two public workshops, and through petitions that have been circulated, which are part of the staff report and part of tonight's presentation, deal with specific concerns that these property owners have, and they're real concerns, and we've done everything we can to try to accommodate them within this ultimate design. So the PowerPoint goes over executive summary, existing conditions, site constraints, concept plan goals, Patterson Road concept plan, and then property owner's input. Again, it serves as a major thoroughfare. It was a focus of both the general plan and also the downtown specific plan. As I've already described, a lot of the land area is owned and/or managed by BNSF and Sierra Railroad. Along this corridor, we have a disconnect of sidewalks on the south side, and then in areas we even have sidewalk, you have utility poles right in the middle of sidewalk, which makes it extremely difficult for folks in a wheelchair or in that type of device to be able to safely negotiate that sidewalk section along Patterson Road. All a constraint as part of this Patterson Road corridor. Took several photographs. This kind of illustrates, you know, photograph number one, two, three, and up to six shows the areas we're working with. This is area one, everybody's really familiar. You're looking towards the high school, towards the east. This is the primary crossing of BNSF. It is a nightmare. It is a nightmare for people in bicycles or walking, you know, to be able to negotiate this, let alone, you know, be able to drive across it, you know, not be delayed by, you know, crossing rail traffic. And then ultimately, the plan is that there would be a signalized intersection at First and Patterson, so we got to somehow come up with a plan that would accommodate that. So that's another reason why this is so important for the city to set forth a strategy and develop a plan line for Patterson. Slide number two, again, this is on the Patterson corridor. This is looking back towards the BNSF main crossing, this right in front of Silicon Container. I'm standing on the south side of Patterson Road, looking west, in a westerly direction. This is looking in the opposite direction, you know, again, on the south side of Patterson Road. This is probably between Terminal and Tina. What this illustrates is that you have parking adjacent to the existing residents, then you have a bike lane, and then you have two lanes of travel, and then you have either the BNSF or Sierra Railroad line, depending on where it is. The dividing line between those two entities is just easterly of Eighth Street, if you can imagine. There's actually a sign that's out there in the field that you can physically see. What we heard from the property owners along Patterson Road is that they don't want their parking to be eliminated. We heard that, we understand that. The ultimate design that we put together shifts the rideaway to the north, and as I've already illustrated, we're suggesting to remove, we're suggesting to enter into a lease contract or some type of franchise agreement with the railroads to be able to utilize 20 feet of their land to accommodate our rideaway needs without affecting the parking in front of these residents. So that's the goal. Again, this is another photograph, looks like we're looking easterly. Again, on the right-hand side is the south side of Patterson Road, on the left-hand side is the north side. This is getting close to, I think, the Claus Road intersection, and you can see the rideaway actually, the improvements, this is actually improving to 80-foot of rideaway, and then, you know, right at the corner of the family apartments, Riverbank Family Apartments, we have the rideaway, but the ADA project that was finished was done actually before the apartments was built, and this curb and gutter wasn't pulled back, but we have the rideaway, so it could be part of a future project. So again, rideaway is not consistent, varies from 55 to 80 feet, and then again, we have the constraint regarding parking along the south side of Patterson Road between Terminal and Tina. Not to mention the fact that we've got these large railroad crossing arms. The ultimate plan suggests moving the road rideaway more to the north at this point than to the south. Now, why is that? Well, BNSF several years ago installed a very costly automated switching gear that's controlled by their corporate offices out of Oakland. We're told to relocate that, we're talking millions of dollars to relocate that switching gear. So what it means is the signal arm on the north side would have to be moved to the north, and we'd have to add a couple different new panels to the rail crossing itself and relocate and/or eliminate one manual switchgear on the north side of Patterson Road to accommodate the road width that we're suggesting. You know, we've got utility lines, there's a perfect example of the fact that you've got sidewalk, but you've got a utility pole that interrupts, you know, the flow of, you know, pedestrian traffic using that sidewalk. I mean, that's not good, that's not what we're trying to promote. We're trying to, you know, come up with a plan that kind of cleans all that up and preserves, again, the parking on the south side of Patterson Road. And then again, this shows what we're dealing with on parking constraints. This is just kind of a table, you know, their traffic consultants put together. It's right out of our general plan. It tells us what we're looking at for anticipated types of traffic and what we would need. What it clearly illustrates is in order for us to have a level service that we need to accommodate long-term growth, not only in downtown core area but also within the Riverbank general plan area, we need to have a four-lane divided road, and that's what we're working towards. We need to be able to demonstrate that. We have an obligation to do that, and that's why we're bringing this to a head. So thresholds, so if no improvements were made, then, you know, we would be at a level, here's where it's talking about, we'd be at a level of service E, which, you know, our general plan says we can go to D, which is, it's on a scale of, you know, A, B, C, D, and then it goes E, and then it goes to F. So we're basically in violation of our own EIR requirements for both the general plan and the downtown specific plan if we don't do something, if we don't have a plan to widen the roadways to accommodate the traffic. And I'm not talking about just vehicular traffic here, because, you know, it's obvious to me and anybody that has been in this community that, you know, that road is used by everyone, bicyclists, you know, handicapped folks, individuals that want to walk, that do walk. Many of the kids that go to Riverbank High School don't have cars, so they walk or ride their bike, and this corridor provides access to them, and it's not safe. And what we're trying to do is try to create a safe corridor for them. This is just another example of, you know, what levels of service might be with or without improvement, so it tells us what the general plan is suggesting, you know, as a two-lane road for both Patterson, between Rozelle and First, between First and Terminal, which is suggesting it could be a level service of F at two-lane, and then between Eighth and Claus. Again, you know, instilling in us the need to develop a plan for a four-lane roadway, so that's kind of the basis of all this discussion. So four lanes of travel, that's what we're proposing. We're proposing a continuous eight-foot bicycle path that's separated from the roadway on the north side, I think that's very important. We're talking about an unobstructed five-foot sidewalk on the south side, we think that's extremely important, and we're talking about preserving the parking that the residents currently enjoy between Terminal and Tina. Complete streets, you know, this is a term that we're all hearing. What is a complete street? Well, a complete street is nothing more than a street segment that's designed for everyone, not just for vehicles, and that's what we're trying to do here. We're talking about pedestrians on the sidewalk, unobstructed, we're talking about a separated Class 1 bike path on the north side, we're talking about four lanes of travel to allow for, you know, inner-city travel as well as, you know, to promote commercial and industrial growth and development. So the interim concept is really, you know, is really kind of what we have now, you know, there's no change, you know? You know, it's the two lanes of travel doesn't really comply with what our general plan is suggesting we need to move towards, provides the parking, et cetera. The same thing here, the ultimate design, and this is at Tina and Patterson, you know, preserves the parking, gets us, you know, in this case, only three lanes of travel, but we feel with the center lane that qualifies, and then gets us that separated eight-foot bike lane on the north side. So that is the ultimate concept, and I got to stress, when and if the city has money. I mean, it doesn't come from, you know, the tooth fairy, and it doesn't come out of a tree. I mean, the city has to be very active, and they have been, they will continue to be, with CMAC funds and federal and state dollars, you know, to be able to build segments of this roadway section. You've heard, right now, the city's working on, you know, a new signalized project at Patterson and Rozelle. That's been in the works for, you know, four or five years. You know, we're hopeful, we'll be under, you know, construction of that shortly, but that's just one element of this whole picture, you know? And without an ultimate plan, it would be difficult for the city to be able to move forward with, you know, even segments of this. Again, this is ultimate, again, preserving the parking on the south side, suggesting an eight-foot bike lane separated on the north side, and then three lanes of travel, two east, excuse me, two west and one east, and then a center divide. As I said, we had two workshops, one on February 25th, and then one in the field on Saturday on March 28th, and we met with property owners, many of which were very concerned, they're very clear on what their representations were to us. Their concerns are presented in your package, along with a petition that was circulated to council as a result of one of those workshops. And at this point, you know, we're suggesting that this interim and ultimate plan line be recommended to City Council for adoption, and that, you know, in the end, the city will, city staff, city will be working with the railroads to negotiate a 20-foot easement in order for this to become a reality. The other part of this equation is that we're very fortunate to have Congressman Jeff Denham, who's very interested in this whole issue. We've been in contact with their representatives, they have an entire package, just like you have tonight, and it's our hope, because of Jeff Denham's representation on the Federal Rail Commission, that we'll be able to get somewhere with a railroad and be able to negotiate a fair and equitable agreement with them for the use of the 20 feet that we're suggesting here. So it's a multifaceted problem, many people involved, and we've done the best we can to try to come up with, you know, a resolution to this issue. So I've done a lot of talking, there's a lot of attachments, a lot of exhibits in your package. All of that's been available online. We've sent notices to all the property owners along Patterson Road, you know, of the past workshops as well as this public hearing, so they have a chance to participate in it. If there's questions that they have, we're here to answer those questions. This matter is going to go to the City Council, I don't know if a date's been physically set yet. I suspect the second meeting in February, again, notices will be sent out to the public, so they'll get a chance to participate, ask questions, get details, and be informed as to what we're talking about here. Anyway, I've done a lot of talking. Any questions about what you've seen or what you've heard?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any questions, commissioners? No? Is there anyone else here to speak on item 3.1?
John, John, excuse me.
Question?
I've got a quick question.
Yeah.
On the middle divide, that middle lane.
Yeah.
Quote, concept here, how they built the new, what is it, the, on Kieranin?
Yes.
Not Kieranin, Kieranin to Clarebell?
Yes.
That middle divider that, where the four lanes are at?
Yes.
It's a very thin one.
Yes.
Is that something that can be conceptually thought of for something like this to?
Well, you know, again, we got to understand, this middle divider is intended to serve a couple different purposes, especially along Patterson Road, where you have residents that need a free movement into their property. So they need to be able to pull into this center lane, not worry about someone hitting them from behind, and be able to turn into their driveway. And a lot of the homes along there have, the front yards gated, but they don't have an automatic gate structure, so they need that time to be able to open up the gate, you know, and then get in. But anyway, needless to say, we need that center turning lane for movements.
Definitely.
It's important, both movements to the north and also movements to the south. Keep in mind, the ultimate plan is for Patterson to be signalized at Rozelle, of course, but then First Street, Third, and Eighth. First Street, Third, and Eighth. So you keep that in mind also, and at those intersections, we have to provide space for the turning movements that are going to be necessary, and that's what this plan provides.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. You have questions?
Yeah.
Okay, step forward, please.
And a new question came up since John was speaking.
Okay, can I just halt you momentarily? Could you give your name and your city of residence, please, sir?
Sure. I'm Haskell Moore, 3848 Patterson Road, Riverbank.
Can you, can you say your name again, please, sir?
Haskell.
Haskell.
Hmm.
Continue.
Okay. This is a letter I got in the mail, all the residents got in the mail stating and pointing out that I felt they had went from the four lane and the turn lane to this, because this said, this is what you're meeting on tonight, was two lanes west, a turn lane, one lane east, and eight-foot bike path on the north side and a planner. And I went in and seen Donna about this Thursday or Friday, when I got this in the mail. I checked at the north side here also. This is on the agenda, is on the front outside, and then I come in, I see this one. So was this posted outside too, on the front? Because we never got it in the mail or anything, this is all we got in the mail. So are we talking tonight about four lanes and a turn lane and a bike lane and a parking lane? Or are we talking about two west, one turn lane, one east, bike lane and a planner and parking on the south side? What are we talking about?
Okay, let's see who we can direct that question to. Donna, do you want to take that on, or do you want to refer that to Mr. Anderson?
Well, Mr. Anderson just discussed two lanes westbound and a turn lane in the center, and then an eastbound lane, parking and the bike lane.
Right, and I understood, but first he spoke about the four lane, he wants to do a four lane, and I want to make sure which one you are going to pass for tonight to put before council.
Mr. Anderson?
First of all, you know, all these exhibits have been made available online, you know, for months, so nothing's new. We have rideaway constraints in various segments. What we've suggested here, and this illustration is perfect, because it's showing four travel lanes and a center turning lane from Terminal westerly towards Rozelle. That's the plan, okay? As it relates to Terminal to Tina, we don't have enough rideaways, so what we're doing is we're taking the lane configuration, we're only getting two westerly, westbound lanes, a center turn lane, and one eastbound lane, and the other eastbound lane is being occupied by parking, because we have residents along that, so they're, so it's basically from Tina, excuse me, from Terminal to Tina, Terminal easterly to Tina, we're only going to be able to get three travel lanes. That's all we can get, center turn lane, three travel lanes, and a parking lane. Now, if we eliminated the parking, then we'd be able to get the four travel lanes, but we can't do that.
Right.
We've already heard that. It's very important for us to preserve that parking, so that's what we're proposing.
Well, us on Patterson Road would like to thank you for preserving the parking, but I misunderstood something, I guess, because I thought he was talking about, he wanted to go for four lanes, if we had to. Online, this is what I see, and I thought that was going to be what we're going to do now, at the most. But it shows Terminal and Patterson, and it shows online, it shows Tina and Patterson. It doesn't show Eighth and Patterson, it doesn't show Claus and Patterson. What it does show, though, if you go to the next picture after this, at Tina Lane, it shows that you've taken these three lanes and dropped them in and converted it to four lanes of traffic, two south, two east, two west, and turn lane. Now, if we made a petition up, I ask everyone between Terminal and Claus Road to sign my petition, save the parking. It looks like you want to stop it at Tina and no longer, no more parking between Tina and Claus, which there is four houses there in one block that don't belong to the new apartments the city built. There's another block that is left out, where if you go to the next picture, where Tina and Patterson, as you'll see, they're dropping two more lanes in, it gets narrow like this, then they're dropping two more lanes in, right away, and driving right against the curb and sidewalk, and those people would like to have their parking reserved also. And Eighth Street, I'm concerned about the little store. If you put a planner on that north side, it keeps any bathrooms parking over, traveling west. A lot of people stop there, run in the store and grab something to drink, eat, or whatever, and they're gone. There must be 50, 60 stops every day. That person, that store is going to lose a lot of business if you put a planner on that north side. And I about measured that street yesterday. If you got 12-foot streets, and that's what you got, and that's what they said here they had last meeting, you got room there to forget the turn lane, but two lanes west, one lane east, preserve the south side parking, and still get, still get an eight-foot bike lane on the other side, on the north side, without a planner. There's something that came to mind to me yesterday when I pulled in my driveway. I live at 3848, and I got, you got an eight-foot parking lane and you got a four-foot bike lane on the south side. This plan does away with the south side bike lane. I don't really care about a bike lane, but, you know, when I turn in my driveway, it's real sharp, and I'm trying to put two cars on a 16-foot driveway. With that four-foot bike lane and an eight-foot parking, I could get in. They take that four-foot bike lane away, which is the parking right there, the eight-foot parking to allow to maneuver two vehicles, I can't get in. They just can't, so I'm going to do away some yard, anyway. I want the city to be willing to take the curb out and make me a 45 going up into my driveway, if I make my driveway 20 to 24 foot wide. So I would like you to really think about that. As far as that turn lane goes, I don't see if we really need a turn lane. But if you want to move two lanes of traffic faster, you can still do it without a turn lane and by doing this in our section between Terminal and Eighth Street. That's all I have for now.
That's all your considerations, then? So Donna, with regard to his concerns, driveway, can't get through, minus the four-foot bike lane, there's a business consideration because of the traffic. lane, there's a business consideration because of the traffic, and the planner? Is that something that could be brought up later when the actual? Is that something that we can consider later, or is that something that we can consider now?
The staff is looking for your direction tonight on all the pieces of it.
Okay. Okay. So, then, Mr. Haskell, do you just want to reiterate what your concerns are briefly, so that staff can take those considerations down as we discuss within the planning commission members, please?
Okay. Yes. If you had three lanes of traffic, two west, one east, if you had an eight-foot bike lane on the north side, no planner, and an eight-foot parking on the south side, and a four-foot bike lane, you'd probably have to take that four-foot bike lane and make it three in order to get 55 foot in there.
Mr. Haskell, are you asking about from Terminal to Tina, or from Tina to going westbound, or eastbound, excuse me? What section in the Patterson?
Between Terminal and hopefully a block past Tina.
Past Tina, okay.
Because those people, those houses there, okay, there's two, there's two homes there that have side streets, okay? But the people that live on the very end of that, before the apartments start, there must be six cars in that family, and all they have is a place to park two cars on a driveway and the street. And they're a block away, if they try to go park on another street or something like that, you know? They really need the parking, and they're on the very ends. So... Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. Michael Monchine with Monchine Industries.
Hello, Mr. Monchine.
When I speak, I get nervous. If I'm down there, I'm okay. But you know...
Could you speak right into the...
I live in Oakdale.
Okay.
And, but our business has been here since 1978. My father purchased property in '76 on Patterson and Rozell. And now I own the whole entire section there for my cabinet company and granite fabrication. What I've seen here in the city of Riverbank is like a lot of cities. Do something, all these chairs are a city block. Let's do something for that one. Let's go over to here. There's no game plan. At one time, this gentleman here, he's doing a great job making us reports. It's been 25 years in planning. I've been to a lot of these, never ever have heard it. Now they want to put a stoplight at Patterson and Rozell. And I suggested that many, many years ago. But you can't do it. But now you can. And I just wonder, why couldn't you do it then, when I was asking about it? And it couldn't be done, and this is from the city manager, the planning commission, and everybody, it's too close to the railroad. And if a car backs up, and it's on the railroad, a car comes, or a train comes, there's going to be a collision. I've also wanted to get, and I know every one of these people here, and I don't know any of them, but they would jump up and down, and I'll give them money if they don't, but for a quiet zone like Escon. But you can't do that either, because of the liability, I'm being told. But how come Modesto just put it in? Escon has it, and you can't make Riverbank a quiet zone? I live out by Woodward Reservoir. I invite any one of you to come. Have a bottle of wine with me, and I'll tell you exactly where the train is, every morning, every evening. I can hear it, just past Escon coming this way. It's a nightmare. Make City of Riverbank not like Manteca. Used to go through Manteca. Ooh, we're in Manteca because of the sugar factory. But Riverbank's known for the train. Make a quiet zone. Put the stoplight in, but also for the people on Patterson Road here, something to think about. And I'd love to see this. Put an overpass for the children. There is a lot of children, a lot of them. And for light industry, you need a four lane. That's all residential, that's, that pretty much is taking the place there. There's no light industry on that road. Make Rozell Avenue. That's a road, that's a thoroughfare from Modesto. Patterson Road is not a thoroughfare. It's a collector's street from all the people coming down to Rozell or going straight ahead. So, now, all of a sudden, you take, like I say, you take a piece, and you have a piece from the railroad track, you know, heading to the east. But what about from the railroad track going to the west? What are you going to do there? They just did that real nice improvement. You've got two lanes with a center turn lane. How, you know, what's going to happen? You know, you've got to think of a long-term plan, not just a short term. And also, you know, when I say an overpass, BNSF, the city was grateful, along with the alliance, helped us acquire where our showroom is, because that's the fast track. And that was, that had no use for BNSF. And so, we were able to purchase that piece, and the city was actually thinking about putting a, their city yard there on our property. We were going to split it, but then they didn't want to do it. But close off the street, make that a stop there. It's not a thoroughfare, you know? It's a collector's street for the city people that live there. Have some integrity for those poor people. To put this in, what a nightmare. I would hate being in their shoes. And that's, this is just my opinion. I hope I'm good with you people and so forth. And I would love to see a quiet zone, and put a stop, you know, close that off. And then you won't have the horns blowing and so forth. But if, you know, take the bigger picture. What are you going to do after this? What's the next step? Because no industry can come in here and be anywhere along there. It's all housing, you know? So, anyway.
Let me ask you a question. If you could define, in your own words, what you mean by the quiet zone?
Where it's a non-directional horn, a train horn, like the city, like City of Escon has put in. You come, just come to my place, you're on the phone, I have to, we have to go ahead and tell everybody, can you hold on? The train's coming. And they blow that horn like there's no tomorrow. And even one council meeting that I was here, all of a sudden, the train horn went off, and the whole place erupted. Yeah, I mean, it's tough. Just come over to my place, you know, one morning.
What is exactly a non-directional?
Yeah, a non-directional.
Is it actually, is it a horn that points someplace?
Yeah, it's pointing downward towards, towards the intersection. But when, and the federal government has increased the decimals on the trains, so people can hear them. But the non-directionals have worked great in the city of Escon, and in Modesto, and wherever they have them. You know, they put them in San Jose, or Sacramento, wherever there's light rail, they got the non-directional train horn, you know, to make it a quieter thing than having a train horn blowing. But like I say, for these poor people to have a four lane, let's put a four lane in front of your house. You know, you would jump up and down, and put a for sale sign up right away. Save their place, save the city of Riverbank. Come up with a good plan. Make some thorough traffic, you know, like going into Modesto, Rozell Avenue, that'd be a beautiful. We had, we had the junkyards there in the 60s and 70s. And all of a sudden, now, housing's on it. God made dirt, dirt don't hurt. But I'll tell you, I still wouldn't want to have a house there, you know? Who knows? But where is our industrial coming from? You know, from out of town? And everybody moves out of town. Here, at some, at certain points of the year, I have over 400 employees. And it's a beautiful town, the city of Riverbank. I'm so happy we're here, and it's been a great city for us. And we even helped put in the storm drain with a grant, and on Patterson and Rozell. And it just, I don't know, I just wanted to say my piece, so I'll be quiet. And like I say, I hope, I hope it doesn't go through for these people. I would love to see a non-directional, put the stoplight in. But to have all these stoplights for just these people, industry isn't going up and down that road. So, just, I invite you, come and have a bottle of wine, or just come and answer my phone for a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to item 3.1? Good evening. Yes, please state your name and your city of residence.
My name's Rosa Medrano, M-E-D-R-A-N-O. And I live on Ward Avenue, 2924 Ward Avenue. I just wanted to kind of comment on this gentleman's remarks just now. And it also has something to do with the new development that's supposed to go down on Ward Avenue. And this will pertain to Patterson Road also, because they want to put 26 homes there on Ward Avenue. And that's going to generate many, many more automobiles.
So, your comment is, is towards item 3.1, and additionally, it would be...
It would also affect Ward Avenue. Because right now, when we're, when we're turning from Ward Avenue to Rozell Avenue, left or right, there's, you've got to wait there at a certain amount of time to turn on Rozell, because there's so much traffic at this time. And can you imagine, when we have 20 more, 26 more homes, there'll be probably two cars per family, there'll be at least 70 cars coming through there? Because they're going to have to come back on Rozell to go to Modesto, if they work. Or, you know, they're going to have to work, because those homes are going to be quite expensive for, you know, the income that we make here in Riverbank. Well, at one time, many, many years ago, a gentleman came to my house, because I was doing some reconstruction on the home. And he showed me a plan that at one time, here in Riverbank, that Rozell was supposed to be two lanes going towards Modesto, two lanes coming into Riverbank. And he said it was supposed to come from Claus all the way down to Patterson Road. And I was just wondering if that's still in the plan, planning commission at this time, or it was, or is it put aside? Just like, just like Patterson to, from Rozell to the high school, we were supposed to have sidewalks. And that was like 25 years ago, and we still do not have sidewalks for the, for the children to go to, you know, to school. And it's, it's bad, because, you know, anybody walking from Riverbank High School to Rozell to, and we've got a lot of new homes, and we're going to get some more new homes in there, we're going to have more children, we're going to have more pedestrians going up and down. We have assistant living, and a lot of people come with their little wheelchairs, and they're going right in front of my house. You know, I don't mind, they're very friendly, you know? But, you know, that's pedestrians. And, you know, like this gentleman was saying, there's a, it showed on his monitor there, there's telephone poles in the middle of the sidewalk, they cannot use the sidewalk, so they have to use the roadway, and they go down Ward Avenue, because there's not that much traffic, to go down to the donut shop. And a lot of people go to the donut shop in the morning, it's on Highway 108 there. And there's a lot of people crossing the street, and they have their little wheelchairs, or they go down and get a hamburger, you know? They don't have very much to do over there in that side of the town. So, that's what they do in the morning and in the evening. So, that, you know, that's going to put a, a lot of pedestrians and automobiles on that road going on into Rozell, and then coming into Riverbank, if they're going to shop here in Riverbank. So, you know, I thought maybe I'd say something to, so you can take that into consideration too, when you're planning the roadways here in Riverbank.
Thank you very much.
You know, because I'm not, I'm not against the homes that go in, into that on Ward Avenue. I'm just concerned about the vehicles, pedestrians, you know, that's a big point to take into consideration. And we have a lot of children on Ward Avenue, a lot of small children under five. And they play ball out in the road. And one day, the police officer from Riverbank came out there and gave them the little cones to put out there, so when they're out there, they can play. Cars go by there so fast, so, so fast, you know? Even the speed bump probably wouldn't stop it. And at one time, we were asking for a stop sign there on Palmer and Ward, and they wouldn't give it to us, and finally, they put it in. But still, yet, a lot of people don't stop at that stop sign. And with 20, you know, 50, 60 more automobiles going through there, you know, I'm afraid something bad's going to happen with, with one of the mentally challenged people that walk down that way, or people that use their little motor bicycles. So, I thought I'd bring that up at this council meeting, I mean, at this time. And thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes. There's someone else? Item 3.1? Yes.
My name is Vince Brown, and I'm here representing Thunderbolt Wood Treating Services. We're just down from Mike on Patterson Road, and I just, I'm sure glad I'm not part of this planning commission, or I don't have your job, because this is extremely difficult. And, you know, I just wanted to voice my charity for what, all of the competing needs of the community in this bottleneck area between the railroad. I have, on good days, 30 trucks coming in and out of our wood treating business there, which would, would take up probably two of the lanes, making that the turnout and the turn-in. So, there seems to be, I will humbly offer my opinion, it seems to be that there may be more thought needed about all of the competing agendas that are going on in this area before a final plan is brought to the city council. Because you do have, you do have industry, you do have a railway, and I've learned quite a bit tonight that there is a vital community east of us, with people that are, that are needing bicycle, foot access, et cetera. So, I, I'm glad I'm not you guys, but we've, we've been here some time, so please don't leave us out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please. Can I say something else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Haskell Moore, 3848 Patterson Road. This thing with the bicycles and the sidewalks, okay? When the city pulled the sidewalks on the south side of Patterson Road, at the corner of everywhere there's a telephone pole, they took about three or four feet of each homeowner's property without saying anything at all, because you have to have four feet around the pole to get a wheelchair around it. And if you look everywhere there's a pole on Patterson Road, they have went in the yard. So, people build their fence at an angle in those corners. They said nothing about it, because they realized we have to have a sidewalk. Sidewalks are good. But years ago, I can't remember when it was, myself and my neighbor here, they came to us, the city did, and they said, you've got to go underground service. Now, we're on Patterson Road between Tina Lane and Eighth Street. He's on the corner, Tina Lane, and I'm next door. So, they went underground service on our two homes. And I said, okay, I don't see them digging ditches to my house. And they said, well, everybody in the box is going to do it. So, we can put sidewalks in. Okay. So, they went, we went underground. And they come in, and they put this unit on top of your, top of your service. You don't have to change your service or anything. They run the wire underground up to that unit, and then they drop it right in the top of your box, so you don't have to have an underground box. I did, because I had mine all changed, because it was going to cost just as much. But the city, to have them add that box, it would be, if I bought my box and everything it went in, I had to have everything there to do it. It's easier for the guy to actually do a new underground box than just to go through the top of my old one. And my service was too small. So, they did just our, just our houses, and they stopped. And those telephone poles are a nightmare. And the house next to me, the pole that's there, is the worst pole in Riverbank. I know that, I grew up with the guy, used to be the foreman over the lineman worker, PG&E. And he's out there working that pole one day, his crew was. And I said, why have you added more iron on top of that pole? Why don't you, give it a button? And he goes, this is the worst pole. This is the worst block in Riverbank, Eighth Street to Tina, and that's the worst pole in Riverbank. And the guard on the rail, the hose, that's pulling it back on the east side, they keep knocking that off, the bolts on it's gone. I keep putting it back up there for the last two years. I turned it in the city, I've turned it in PG&E. I've turned it into the city. I've turned it into PG&E. When you replace the poles on that street, a couple of years ago, they cut around the old pole and took it out, put the new one in. In the nighttime, walking down that street, on my street, that pole's in the dark. And there's two foot of open ditch all the way around that pole. I've turned that into the city several times. I call PG&E because there's a big cable hanging out from the pole, eight foot. And he came by and he said, "That's not mine. That's telephone." So telephone guy happened to drive by. PG&E guy waved him down. "You know how you fix that cable?" He took a roll of black tape and taped it to the pole. He goes, "We've got to have a work order." I said, "Okay, you get the work order." "No, you've got to call it in." So I go back to the house and I call it in. And that was two years ago.
Well, thank you, Haskell. We appreciate you bringing this information to our attention. And is there any other concerns?
The main thing was bike lanes, bicycles, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I know it looks to people like we have a bad traffic jam on Patterson Road, traveling especially west. Eight o'clock in the morning, I'm three-fourths of the way from 8th Street back to the east. Cars are backed up there. And people say, "See, you've got to have four lanes." No, you don't have to have four lanes. You've got to do something for the kids that live on the north side of towns, crossing the crosswalk down there because they have the right-of-way, right? The no signal light there, it's just stop signs. So that's what's costing the backup between at eight in the morning and the afternoon after school. Probably half the kids at high school, they go to 8th Street and they turn north. Same thing again. That's where our traffic problem is on Patterson Road. That's the only traffic problem I've seen. A long, long time ago, they should probably should have went underground on Patterson Road. Before they put the sidewalks in, that problem is solved. They should have put a sidewalk on the north side of Patterson Road, all the way to Roseell or 1st Street, anyway. That way, when the kids come out of school, the ones that live on the north side of Patterson Road, they could cross right there at the intersection of Claws and Patterson. Those kids wouldn't even, they'd come down this way to cross at 8th. They've got buttons on the poles there to cross with and everything if you had a crosswalk on the north side of a sidewalk coming in. And that would have solved the traffic problem and split the kids up too so it wouldn't be so congested, you know. Bicycles, riding bicycles to high school on Patterson Road. I'm up every morning when the kids are going to school, I'm retired. I'm there in the evening when they come home. And I don't see more than two bicycles, once in a blue moon, going towards our high school any given morning.
Okay.
They're walking.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for providing that information to us. Is there anyone else to speak to item 3.1? Seeing no one, we will then... Mr. Anderson? Okay.
Madam Chairman, let me take a moment, just kind of recap some of the concerns I heard tonight.
Yes, please.
Haskell Moore is correct. The exhibit that we shared for the area between, well, it kind of shows it here on this concept plan, between Tina and Claws. And this is just a PowerPoint. The actual exhibits that are part of the staff report show it a little clearer, but shows the elimination of parking, Tina to Claws. There could be some modifications to allow for parking because I've got more right-of-way here. I've got 80 feet of right-of-way. The real issue is, as you get closer to Claws Road, I've got to have enough space for a turning movement, a right-hand turning movement to go south on Claws Road itself. So there is some space. I don't know exactly what the distance is between Tina and Claws, where we could allow some parking because I've got sufficient right-of-way. So we can resolve that issue.
Okay.
The whole concern about, you know, bicycle lanes, you know, the lane configurations here are all, the width is all controlled by Caltrans standards. We look at a bike path, bike path is five feet wide if it's Class 2 in the pavement section. What we're suggesting is a separated, you know, bike path. And we call it a bike path, but quite frankly, it could be used for pedestrians as well. So it's really, we're truly talking about creating, you know, a path on the north side that can be used by pedestrians or bicyclists.
Okay.
You know, it's not descript.
Without a safety issue?
Without a safety issue. So it is separated, most importantly, it's separated from the roadway section. That's why you have that buffer. You have a planter of some sort. And the minimum, as prescribed by the state of California, is two feet. And what I've tried to do is I've tried to widen it in some areas where I had sufficient right-of-way to something that's broader than that. So there has to be a great separation between the roadway and the Class 1 bikeway, pedestrian path, in order for it to qualify. So that's a very important distinction. So I can't mess around with, you know, creating a three-foot bike path. It doesn't work. I'm sorry. This doesn't work. So that's very important. Mike Monchi brought up, you know, several points. There is a distinction between what Mike is referring to. Really, it's called a wayside horn. It's what Escalon has installed. It is a wayside horn. It's a directional horn that's controlled by the engineer. Those are installed only by agreement with the railroad. And unfortunately, the railroad has the upper hand. And they ask the city to assume 100% liability at that intersection when those types of facilities are installed. The other device that's been used in the Central Valley, the only one I can think of that's even close to here is in Stockton off of Marotta, just westerly of the Highway 99, between West Lane and 99. And that's called a quiet, that is called a quiet zone crossing. They're designed such that they have a concrete median and they have double and quadruple, not only, what am I trying to say? Signal arms that prevents cars from going around the signal arms and avoiding the train and then going, you know, on their merry way. So they're very specific design. And again, in the city of Stockton's case, they assumed, you know, unknown liability when they did that agreement. I mean, I've asked them specifically, "What kind of liability do you think that you've signed on to?" And they can't describe it because it's unlimited. And it's infinite, you know. And the railroad, again, has the upper hand. And the only way you install that is by agreement with the railroad. So that's very complicated. With, as you know, as this commission knows, with the downtown specific plan, this commission, the city council agreed, rather than putting in a vehicular underpass on Santa Fe Avenue alignment between the Canary property and the downtown core area, we chose, the city chose, through public hearing process, to promote and to plan for pedestrian overpass. So we are planning for a pedestrian overpass. It's actually in our fee program now on the Santa Fe Avenue alignment. So that addresses that issue. I'm not sure what Mike means by closing off. I mean, I didn't get a chance to ask Mike. He's not in the audience now. He left. But I'm not sure what he meant by closing off. So I can't really address that issue. The four lanes of travel, you know, this has been studied, re-studied, quadruple studied. Our traffic experts have said we need to have, we need to achieve four lanes of travel. You know, I'm not going to sit up here and act as if, you know, I'm a transportation planner. I'm not. I'm a landings planner. I'm here to interpret, you know, what the goals and policies are, what our mitigation obligations are pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. And it's very clear, you know, for many years that we're supposed to be working towards a four-lane roadway in Patterson Road. So that's our obligation. I don't know what more to say than that. Vince Brown from Thunderbolt made a very interesting comment. Not interesting, it's truthful comment. And that is Patterson Road is being used for industrial truck traffic. We know that. Silicon container, same kind of thing. You know, we want to promote that. We want to provide, you know, easy access to these businesses so they're not frustrated, so their trucks can get in and out. And that we can adequately allow for the moving of pedestrian and vehicular traffic, not only commercial traffic up and down this corridor. It's extremely important. That's what our goal is. I'm not really sure how to respond to Haskell Moore's comment about, you know, a pole being removed and sidewalk not being replaced. That's kind of outside the purview of what we're discussing here. And then, I think that was it. I think that was the issues. So kind of to summarize, you know, we're requesting the commission to deliberate, to take this information in and to make a recommendation ultimately to the city council. We've prepared a resolution. The resolution has, you know, detailed exhibits of what we would think is interim and ultimate for Patterson Road. There could be a change in the area that Haskell Moore has suggested between Tina and Claws, where you'd allow some parking against those residential units. And that would not be in conflict with what we're trying to accomplish.
The extension of the one block over?
Yeah. Again, you know, I agree. There are residents between Tina and Claws that use that space for parking, where we could accommodate the parking with the right-of-way that we have. But as we get closer to the intersection of Claws at Patterson, we need to provide space for a right-turn movement. So we can't have parking there. So there's some distance, you know, from Claws westerly where we can allow parking.
Okay.
So I don't know where that is specifically. But, you know, it's probably could be a couple of travel lanes, maybe 150 feet, something like that.
Okay, but there could be some adjustment, some accommodation for this parking issue.
Right, near the Tina and Patterson intersection, yes.
And again, there's no real adjustment on the bike lane, but it can be a bike lane pedestrian path.
Exactly. That's what they're used for.
And safe.
Yes.
For both.
That's right.
Okay.
That's the intent.
Hey, John, I know you mentioned early in this that this is, it's not being built. This is basically set in a plan.
Right.
And I know as plans go further, things come up, they can be amended. So is, that will be taken into consideration?
Well, you know, here's the deal. Here's the deal. You know, this plan line does nothing more than sets forth a strategy to develop Patterson Road. From there, there are hard engineering designs that take place when the city council feels it's a priority. And then hopefully, you know, funding is identified to do the segments, segment of improvements. You know, quite frankly, you know, because of some of the air grants that are out right now, had we had gone through this process several years ago and had a set of plans sitting on some shelf somewhere, we could have probably, I don't know for sure, but we could have been pretty aggressive in applying for free money to help build this bike path on the north side, you know.
But we didn't.
Again, there has to be a plan set, set on shelf somewhere. We have to conclude our negotiations with the railroad. Because again, you know, there's another party here that's not represented in this discussion. We've had several meetings with the railroad. You know, they've told us what they would allow and what they wouldn't allow. And I'm telling you right now, you know, getting this extra 20 feet from them to make this work is not going to be an easy achievement. But the plan line we've suggested here is the plan line, I think, that works, you know, for the majority of the individuals that are directly affected by what we're suggesting.
Initially.
Yes.
What would it take for stages of later changing to the plan? From more feedback from the folks that live on Patterson?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, when the council takes action to physically go towards improvement plans, you know, the public will have opportunity to comment then. You know, because the city council will authorize the expenditure of funds, right, to do the plans.
It seems that...
And/or to release the contract. I mean, it's a whole process.
It seems that each section has different needs.
That's right.
And like you said, there's a lot of constraints, but yet, if we can put a plan together just to put on the table and again amend as time goes by input from the residents, that can be done.
That's right.
So we can make note of then special consideration by the council to recognize these certain particular issues that we're discussing then.
The administrative record on this is very clear. The petitions that have been circulated are part of that administrative process. The concerns that have been expressed tonight are part of the administrative process, all of which will be bound up and be part of the presentation to council.
Very good. Thank you so much. Is there anything else, commissioners, for Mr. Anderson?
Yeah.
Oh, John, before you sit down?
You said extra 20 feet?
Yes.
So is it in the future that that's negotiable? Are you saying that that's not going to happen at all?
Well, no, I'm saying the railroad's, for the railroad's position right now, it's not going to happen. Bottom line.
Possible that it can happen.
They've sent us back to the drawing board and told us, you know, "Look, we're not giving up any right-of-way. You've got to come up with another way of solving the problem." You know, we've had that discussion with the neighborhood. The neighborhood has told us clearly they're not eliminating the parking in front of them. So we said, "Okay, we'll go the other direction." Now, we're just going to go, you know, it does, the reality is, you know, we can only achieve as much of this plan as we can achieve, you know. And if we only get 10 feet from the railroad, then we've got to work within the 10 feet that we get with the constraints that we have. But at this point, we're going to, we're going full force to ask for the 20 feet from the railroad.
Okay, so worst-case scenario, we don't get the 20 feet.
And it stays as it is. So it's an interim. Stays as it is. And then we start running into problems when we can't achieve the levels of service that were discussed within our general plan. So then what does that do? You know, the attorney can answer this question, you know, what does that do to long-term development projects that want to come in? It'd be very frustrating for them because they may not be able to come in because we wouldn't be able to mitigate our obligations.
You mentioned something earlier, I think it was some state requirements?
Or lane widths, yes.
But we have to comply with that because right now, we're not in compliance with our EIR, right?
Well, no, no, that's not, that's not what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. Our, the EIR for the general plan and the EIR for the downtown specific plan clearly state in order to build out these plans, this roadway segment has to be a certain width. So what we're doing is we're charting a path to accomplish that, to comply with those mitigation obligations.
Beginning the plan to comply with those obligations.
Right.
This is the initial step to begin.
Right.
Any other questions, commissioners? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anyone else before I close the public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, then we will move on. Commissioners? Any questions for staff?
Hey, Donna, have there been any plans brought to the table in the past on behalf of Patterson that you're aware of?
You mean recent development plans?
Years back or anything like that?
I don't know about the distance past.
As I heard from some of the comments, that this should have been done years ago. They were talked about years ago but never brought to the table.
Well, I think that's the problem. There was no cohesive plan for Patterson Road. So development was allowed to move forward in bits and pieces and in spurts. And we're trying to unify that now so that doesn't occur in the future.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, then we'll move forward. Commissioners?
I got one more if I may. On these traffic lights, as John alluded to, that these are identified now? Have they done their census on this, their numbers, traffic? I take it they have. On that end, to really warrant traffic lights?
So, okay, there's two parts to this. Let me, I'm sorry.
Let me reopen then the...
Well, I'm part of staff, so it doesn't really matter.
Okay, so staff comments?
The general plan, the general plan, the traffic analysis for the general plan says that you need to have signals at these locations when it's warranted, okay? I'm not saying it's warranted now. When the city council recently updated the system development fees, we included a list of facilities that needed to be built, right, with impact fees, with development impact fees. Those intersections and the signalization of those intersections are part of the system development fee program. So those costs are already in there. So when you pull a permit on a new house or a new commercial project, you're paying your proportional share of the signalization of that intersection when it's warranted. I'm not saying it's warranted now. That warrant will come up at some point in the future. It'll be done by, you know, our traffic expert, whoever that is. And they'll tell us it needs to be done now. Meanwhile, we're collecting dollars to fund that signalization, which is our obligation.
That will be earmarked for that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Donna or John? Commissioner?
I think they addressed all the questions that were on the table.
Okay. Then we...
Looking at more of a recommendation to put a plan on the table.
We either going to approve it as it is so that it goes...
I think we would recommend.
Well, we've already, what we're doing is determining to accept the recommendation to move forward for this, for this plan. And at the same time, we've discussed concerns, the public concerns, and creating a path for adjustments that are within... the public concerns, and creating a path for adjustments that are within compliance.
That have been identified, that we can put-
Within the capacity, mhm.
Pass on to council, city council.
To recognize those, acknowledge those, and-
How would we, I mean-
We could request special consideration for those concerns.
How would we add those, or? Some of the concerns, correct?
Just like, just like, just like what we mentioned, and those are all part of the record, so do we want to add them specifically, or just ask for a review of the record of the concerns of the?
It would be preferable to add specific recommendations, you can move to adopt the resolution with additional input that you, it would be ideal that you provide.
Okay. So then we'll have to go over those then individually, and hopefully, we won't, we won't miss anything here.
You know, I'm, I'm just a little concerned because I know that the plans all show the requirement for an increase in the lanes, that some of the concerns I heard tonight are there, there's a whole group of people that live on Patterson that really don't agree that Patterson should have-
Four lanes.
Four lanes. So I really, I really want that concern, we can, we can go ahead and recommend approval of a plan, realizing that that, those plans could change if the will of the citizens-
Correct.
-is strong enough against a four-lane, a four-lane road there.
And in some cases, it showed the four, went down to three, et cetera, so there was a, the variances there.
We need to be aware of that, some of the people really don't want-
Right.
So concerns in certain areas, it's only, it's only a matter of certain areas that there's a concern of the four lanes, certain area-
Industrial part right there, Roselle to first, that's very industrial, four lanes.
In some places, that would make sense, but farther out in Patterson, I, I have a bit of a problem-
In keeping the parking.
-making that a superhighway in what's right now kind of a rural area.
Right.
I just want to make sure that those concerns are addressed when it comes, comes before the city council for final approval.
A way to word that, as a, as a lump sum.
We can, we can get some assistance-
Get some legal advice here.
-with regard to the verbiage to identify, and not quite as generalized, but maybe specific to the three and four lane issue in, in certain, certain areas of the plan.
Yeah, I think that, I think that the additional input could be summarized as a recommendation to staff prior to submitting to the city council to examine the extent of four lanes throughout Patterson Road.
That would, that would be sufficient for myself, how about commissioners?
That sounds-
Yeah, I think so, I feel better.
That it's, it's more generalized, but yet specific to the three and four lane issue.
Right, and it, because it will be, it will be approved in sections, right, one, one section at a time, as they decide to actually implement this, so if there's a question, does, do we really require four lanes here, that could be addressed at the time we move forward to each section towards the east.
Yeah, to answer your question, when the plan is submitted to the city council for approval, it would be a conceptual plan, but in order to authorize, you know, an example of a widening, you'd have, as John mentioned, hard plans, and you'd have more detailed drawings, so right now, we're looking at a conceptual level plan only, which would be subject to change when you had actual projects coming to the table.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nine sections from beginning to end from Patterson, or Roselle to Claus.
Right.
Okay, also, there's a couple other, with regard to this bike lane and pedestrian pathway, side, the sidewalk.
The north side?
The north side is what he brought up, so that is something that-
As John said, the bike lane would kind of serve as the two, the pedestrian slash bike lane, with safety being the key.
And what about pedestrian crossing, that's another issue that was brought up, the children and-
It's because there is none, no sidewalks currently on the north side from Claus to Eighth, right now, it's bare land, and if it were, it would avoid some of that standstill traffic on Eighth and-
The bottlenecking.
Yeah.
So, but we still have to, the, the sidewalks, that was very important, the sidewalks, so we need to address the sidewalks as well.
With the telephone poles?
Well, not only with the telephone pole, but I think it's also traveling without any sidewalks on, you know, the roads right now, specifically, I think that Ms., Mrs. Madrano brought up the protections of the, the children and the pedestrian crossings, is that correct? Yes, okay.
On Roselle, right?
Or, to Roselle and Patterson? That is a tough intersection.
Yeah, if I could just repeat what John Anderson mentioned, was that there is a pedestrian overpass, that was included in part of the, in the-
Specific downtown.
-impact fee program, so there is a, as it is funded, a pedestrian overpass can be established, and so in order to, you know, set a policy preference to have two pedestrian overpasses, that would be, that would require a little bit more detailed reexamination of, of, of what's going to get funded through impact fees, but there is one overpass that is slated as part of-
And that one was earmarked on Santa Fe.
Okay, so that, that would accommodate the area that she's discussing?
No.
No, it would not, okay. So then, the area that Ms. Madrano's discussing with regard to the students and seniors, disabled, no sidewalks, can, can we?
I would recommend language added to the resolution to instruct staff to examine pedestrian mobility, you know, before the plan is presented to the city council.
Mobility and safety. And with regard to the, the quiet zone and the wayside horn concerns, those would have to be addressed with the railroad.
Yeah, we'll take that out.
I just take note then, take, take notice, okay? So from my, from my notes, it appears that perhaps we've addressed each and every concern, is that, is that, that is, is part of this, item 3.1?
I believe we have.
Okay, is that correct, from your, is there anything else?
Is it all down somewhere?
It will be, it will be down somewhere. There's certain limitations, of course, you know, that, that we can't accommodate everyone because, or not, of every, every concern, because there are limitations of what, what can and, that are out of, out of our control, out of our jurisdiction, but we'll, we'll do our utmost to provide the safety and accommodate what we, what we can in this regard to this upcoming concept plan.
So basically, in adopting this, we would have to state this, and also state in additional, in addition, in adding-
Special considerations for the following. In summary, the, the elements that we've, that we have discussed.
I think those have been memorialized by staff, the considerations.
Okay, very good, okay.
Perfect, so they have that on record.
They have it all on record, okay? Commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution of the planning commission of the City of Rubenque, California, recommending to city council the approval of the interim and ultimate plan line for Patterson Road with specific considerations to the-
Special consideration?
Special considerations to the concerns that the-
The public.
Yeah, the public is brought to the table, and with the mobility and safety of the quarter.
I'll second it.
We'll call vote?
Chair Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vilevadwa?
Yes.
And that's approved for zero.
And thank you to staff for working so hard, and thank you for, for your public comments with regard to item 3.1, the Patterson Road Plan Line. Moving forward then to item 3.2, we're going to change item 3.2, and we're going to switch around 3.4 and 3.2. So 3.4, which is the Ward Avenue Villas, will now be item 3.2, so we will be discussing item 3.2, Ward Avenue Villas, at this time. Okay, I'm going to have Donna go ahead and read item 3.2. It was 3.4, we're switching it, yeah, I don't want there to be any confusion, 3.4 is now 3.2, 3.2, the previous 3.2 is now 3.4, so we're working on Ward Avenue Villas.
Ward Avenue Villas, it's a general plan amendment, rezone, investing tentative map. The project description is request for the development of 28 single-family parcels and a stormwater basin on 2.42 acres to be rezoned to planned development. Property is located at 2912 Ward Avenue, west of Roselle Avenue, APN 132-036-003, within an R1 single-family residential zoning district. The recommendation that the planning commission approves resolution 2016-004, recommending that the city council finds the project exempt under section 15332, class 32, infill development projects of the state secret guidelines, and conditionally approve the request of Troy Wright for a general plan amendment, rezone, and the vesting tentative map to create the 28 single-family lots on 2.42 acres.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move for this plan PowerPoint?
As I mentioned, it's a general plan amendment, rezone, investing tentative The project location is there on Ward Avenue, just west of Roselle. Here is the aerial view, this is the property here in the center, this is Rocky Lane, and this is Don Rafael Avenue. The current general plan designation is low-density residential, LDR, which is 1 to 8 units per net acre. The proposed general plan designation is medium-density residential, MDR, at 8 to 16 units per net acre. The municipal code requires that the planning commission find this project consistent with the city's general plan policies. Over the next couple of slides, I have selected some where the project is inconsistent with the general plan, but may be made consistent if certain modifications are made, and then I also have added some general plan policies that the project is currently consistent with. So, policy design 1.6, approved projects, plans, and subdivision requests shall connect with adjacent roadways and stubbed roads, and shall provide frequent stubbed roadways in coordination with future planned development areas. So the proposed project does not connect to either Rocky Lane, which is currently unimproved, or Don Rafael Avenue, so the project is inconsistent with this general plan policy. The developer has contacted folks on Don Rafael Avenue and asked them their interest in connecting to the new street coming through his subdivision. The majority of the applicant, or the signers, wanted to keep the street with less traffic, and they were against connecting to Don Rafael. Policy design 2.7, in general, the city will require the construction of sidewalks on both sides of all new streets. When staff began reviewing this project, there were no sidewalks on either side of the street, and we requested sidewalks, and the developer did comply and add sidewalks to one side, but unfortunately, that would make the other side of the new street not handicap accessible. Anyone, say, for example, in a wheelchair that would want to get their child to the, a bus stop at the end of the new street, would have to cross the street with no safe path of travel. Policy design 2.8, the city will coordinate with transit providers, and as appropriate, require land and amenities to accommodate transit. When staff sent out this project to outside agencies for comments, the Riverbank Unified School District requested that the developer provide a concrete pad along Ward Avenue for the children to use when waiting for the school bus. This was not provided on the plans, so the project is inconsistent with this general plan policy of providing an amenity to accommodate transit. The project may become consistent if a concrete pad for children on Ward Avenue is provided. Policy design 3.1, the city will limit block lengths and encourage continuity of streets among neighborhoods to facilitate access, increase connectivity, and support safe pedestrian, bicyclist, and vehicular movement in residential neighborhoods. Again, the proposed street does not connect from Ward Avenue to either Don Rafael or unimproved Rocky Way, therefore, the project is inconsistent with this general plan policy, but could become consistent if connected to Don Rafael Avenue. Policy design 3.2, approved plans, projects, and subdivision requests shall provide residential site and building design that contributes to an attractive, pedestrian-friendly environment along neighborhood streets. Approved plans, projects, and subdivision requests will minimize the visual prominence of garages, and instead incorporate porches, stoops, active rooms, and functionally opening windows that face the street. We do have two styles of housing products that incorporate many architectural details that do enhance the elevations, but the front elevations facing the street, which on plans is called Chavez Court, only contain the garage doors and second-story bedroom windows. The entrance doors are on-site elevations, therefore, the project is inconsistent with this general plan policy, but may become consistent with the inclusion of porches, stoops, or active rooms where people can gather and keep an eye on the street, or functionally opening windows that face the street. So we would have some eyes on the street as a crime preventative. Policy CONS-4.2, approved projects, plans, and subdivisions shall provide for collection, conveyance, treatment, detention, and other stormwater management measures in a way that does not decrease water quality or alter hydrology in the Stanislaus River or associated groundwater recharge areas. The developer has added a stormwater basin to the project to keep site, water on-site per state requirements, and he will be working with the city engineer to ensure that it is an appropriate size for the project. Therefore, the project is consistent with this general plan policy concerning stormwater. Conservation 8.6, the city will encourage compact development to achieve more efficient use of resources and provision of public facilities and services. The project does propose a density of 16 homes per net acre, therefore, the project is consistent with this general plan that encourages compact development. Safety policy 2.2- Safety Policy 2.2, the city will consult with fire protection service providers in reviewing development proposals. Development proposals will include city conditions that respond to concerns of fire protection and service providers. Early on in the comment process, the fire department did request that looped waterlines be provided for the project, which would include connecting to both Rocky Lane and Don Rafael Avenue. The developer has complied, and therefore the project is consistent with this general plan policy. Rezoning, the current zoning is single-family residential, and then the proposed zoning is planned development. As part of the planned development process, the developer is requested to provide amenities in exchange for changes in standards. So for example, on this chart there, I've listed the type of standard, the low-density residential zoning standards, and the proposed PD standards. So you can see with number one, whoops, sorry, lot size. Regular single-family zoning would require 6,000 square feet minimum lots. The developer proposes 2,730 square feet minimum lots. Where a lot width would normally be 50 feet minimum, the developer is proposing 30. So as I went down these standards, I did put an asterisk on the ones that are changed or different from the single-family zoning. And you can see on some of these, like for example, the front setback is required to be 10 feet minimum, and he has provided 20 feet minimum. So he has enlarged or expanded some of the zoning standards, but many of them are smaller, like the lot size, lot width, lot depth. The density is higher. We have the local street width, it's a little bit wider than the 34th Street between the curbs. Sidewalks, he's proposed one side of the street, staff has requested two. And street parking, I think I put one side of the street, but I believe there's no parking at all, if that's correct. No street parking.
Yeah, one way out.
On one side? Okay. Second guessing myself here. Okay, this is the vesting tentative map that you've been reviewing. The environmental document pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, staff has determined that the proposed vesting tentative map is exempt pursuant to state secret guidelines in that this is infill development on a site no more than five acres in size surrounded by substantial urban uses, and the site has no value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species, and then no significant effects on the property, and then the site can be served by all utilities. I need to go back here just one moment. In exchange for a reduction in standards, the city does request additional amenities for that neighborhood. So for example, although we have smaller lot sizes, smaller lot width, smaller lot depth, the developer could offer amenities such as enhanced landscaping for the development... excuse me, enhanced garage doors. You know, typically, they, you know, could just put up a blank type of garage door, but an enhanced garage door would be more of like a carriage feel to it, possibly enhanced lighting fixtures outside. And so that in the staff report, staff has requested the provision of some of these amenities in exchange for these reduced standards. I should have put them in the PowerPoint here, but I didn't. Let me pull that up real quick. Okay. I apologize, I thought I had it marked here. Okay, so in speaking with the...
What page are you on, Donna?
Page 237. It's the large paragraph after the chart. Okay, so amenities could include enhanced landscaping, colored concrete or brick crosswalk where the new private street would meet Ward Avenue, electric charging stations and garages, upgraded front doors and garage doors, decorative wrought iron fencing, open space furniture, French doors instead of sliders. So the developer did propose four amenities for these seven deviations: enhanced landscaping, colored concrete or brick crosswalk across the private street, upgraded garage doors, and then two benches at the stormwater basin. Staff has added an additional three amenities to bring that total to seven. That would be French doors instead of sliding doors in the living room, outdoor outlets to support electrical mowers, trimmers, and Christmas lights, and then upgraded electrical And I would like to also mention that the basin, the developer was proposing a dual-use basin, but staff has reviewed the basin, and unfortunately, there isn't a lot of area to support recreation. The sides are fairly steep, it's a smaller flat area at the bottom that many times during the year will be underwater, and there are only two pieces of open space furniture, which is benches, proposed for that area. Therefore, staff does propose park in Luffy instead of it being a dual-use basin. Okay, and I believe that's all the information I have to share at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is there any... I'd like to open the public hearing, please, and is there anyone here to speak for item 3.2, the Ward Villas project?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Troy Wright. I'm a principal with Windward Pacific Builders at 135 South Fifth Street in Oakdale. Our company is mainly an infill builder, and we're, you know, we're the developer and builder for this project. We're currently, that's pretty much all we do is infill properties, infill projects. We currently have one in Modesto that we're doing, one in Concord, we're just embarking on one in Houston. So this is kind of what we do. And as you know, infill projects are, always have their challenges, and this is one with, you know, it has its own challenges. And so when we first started looking at this project over a year ago, we looked at, you know, the configuration of the property. It did have its, it really wasn't conducive to an R1 kind of project just because of its width. It didn't allow for enough depth on the lots for R1 and still get a 50-foot street in And we thought the best, you know, we also looked at the surrounding properties, and we saw that, you know, Don Rafael had some interesting narrow, long lots, and there was a lot of different stuff going on on the surrounding properties. So what we looked at is putting together a project that would become a little bit higher density, that we could still offer homes that were more obtainable to young families, that were suitable for young families with children, and that, you know, if you look at the plan, I don't know if she had the tentative map up, but the backyards, you know, there's considerable backyards in these. Basically...
There was what again?
Backyard.
The backyards on these units are considerable in size, comparable to an R1 lot. And as you, as you can also see that, you know, we allow for two cars in the driveway, we're allowing two cars in the garage. So it does have a lot of space on the homes. And the homes will range between roughly 1,400 square feet to the, I think the biggest one is 1,800 and something livable space. We are proposing an HOA on the project, which will, I think there's some confusion on the conditions, but the HOA will handle the maintenance of the common areas, including the basin, the street, sidewalks, the front yard landscaping for the homes, and also the walls and/or fences that face Ward and the gates along the street facing, you know, that you can see from the street. So the HOA will maintain all that and the integrity of it. I know that Donna had mentioned vinyl fencing on this deal, and I would, you know, I really don't like the idea of vinyl fencing, I think it looks cheap, in my opinion. So I would propose that especially on the wall on or fencing on Ward Avenue, we won't have a whole lot, but that fencing we could upgrade to a decorative masonry wall. And then, as I stated, all the fence, all the gates and fences, and those are inset on the houses. So as Donna mentioned, the front doors are on the side of the lot and they're back towards the house, or kind of closer to the rear of the house. So those gates are not going to be very well seen from the streetscape, but I would propose that they remain wood. And also, all the fences from the, on the rear lots and between the interiors between lots remain wood. And I do have, you know, there's the amenities also that she had listed as far as, you know, compensation for the density. I have no issue with providing a pad on Ward for the school, for the children. We can discuss a sidewalk on the other side of the road. You know, in PDs, you're, you know, you kind of create PDs to do something different, out of the box, kind of a project, and that's what we're trying to do here. I've done many a PDs all over the place that we hadn't had any sidewalks at all. It's just a matter of what you want to achieve on a project, but we can discuss sidewalks on both sides.
Okay.
I do have my engineer, Rod Hawkins from Hawkins and Associates here, that will come up and speak with regards to item number nine on your conditions of the resolution and 11. And then I have Ted Brandevold with Commercial Architecture, and he will come and speak with what we're trying to accomplish with the architecture on this project and address the porches and other issues. You know, the connectivity, if, you know, as mentioned, I personally went to around the owners on Don Rafael and had them, you know, ask if they wanted to connect to our property with a street, and they didn't want that. They thought their children were, they didn't want the traffic through their deal, and that's really the main purpose. We didn't want to connect. We're trying to create kind of an atmosphere here that's not a lot of through traffic, and we wanted to kind of maintain, especially with a private street and an HOA, we kind of wanted to maintain kind of a private feel. We do have a mangate that would be accessible to Don Rafael, and obviously the EVA with knockbox, and it would be with a wrought iron fence facing that street. Rocky Lane, you know, I think Rocky Lane is, you know, it, the city owns only a small portion of right-of-way in there that's not even connected to Rozelle. It's dirt. We just, we don't feel that, if we have to connect to Rocky Lane and Don Rafael, it not only takes away our density unit count, which we need to make this economically feasible for us to do, it's a deal killer for us.
But without the connectivity, then this project is not consistent with the general plan policies.
Well, that's, I think that's up to you decide whether you can, you can live with this or not. I think that it's, it's something that it...
So let's go over the connectivity one at a time, if you would please, and let's discuss each and every issue that...
Do we don't have an aerial view of this?
It's land.
Towards the beginning now.
Yeah. This here is Rocky Lane, and this here is Don Rafael, and this is Ward Avenue. And the proposed new street would come straight down and dead-end right here.
The properties would be along each side of...
Correct, on either side.
Do you have the tentative map for this?
No, I don't think it's on there.
Oh, the actual lots? No, I don't.
We have it here, though.
Yep, you can just keep that there for a second.
So if we could, we could go over each of these streets and what's presented here so that we can view from this aerial view, and she could use her laser pointer, it would be easier for us to have an image of understanding. Okay, stated here, it says Chavez Court does not connect to adjacent Don Rafael Avenue or unimproved Rocky Lane. Could you provide for all of us, the audience included?
This would be where proposed Chavez would be, and then here's Rocky Lane, which staff is not recommending because there is no rights of way into here. And this is Don Rafael right here. So right now, the Chavez proposed, the proposed Chavez Court would come straight down, and then there would be a basin here, and emergency vehicle access here.
So there is some connectivity.
Yes.
Emergency vehicle access, yes.
Emergency vehicle.
And pedestrian access.
Pedestrian access.
So it's dead-ending at the end of here?
Yeah.
It's just gonna...
Yes, right here.
It's just gonna dead-end right there.
Right.
And this is the way, it's not gonna be a keyhole or court, it's just gonna be just a wall right there.
Right, and so, right, and so what happens is that, you know, we've had discussions with the fire department, whatever else, so their access is through that EVA, if need be. And that's also a turnaround for Jilton and anybody else that needs to get down there.
You're going over down here, right?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay, so there's not gonna be a home here, it's just gonna be a wall.
Right.
There's a home towards the end.
Pardon me?
You said something about emergency access.
Up into the left there.
Yeah. Is it the, if that's gonna remain like that, and it's just gonna be a dead-end? Okay.
You said that there's a turnaround, though.
Well, the turnaround that the EVA will access as a turnaround, too.
For Don Rafael.
That's what I mean, but he's stating that...
Right, so Jilton would come down here, pick up the trash, and then back up into the EVA, and then come out.
Okay, so they'd have to...
Right.
Okay.
Saying the aesthetics of that, am I gonna see a big rail that just says, "Stop right here," or is there's gonna, you understand what I mean?
No, there'll be a landscape area. It stops short of the property line. So we'll, there'll be a common area there that will be landscaped, and it'll be a pleasant look to it.
That's the last residence, the last two homes there, or the homes they built, that they have easement to their front door there.
Right. Yeah, they're, you know, their property line is, they have a sidewalk, side access point there that's, yeah, would be, right.
And your feedback was from the neighboring streets there, that they didn't want access to their...
Right, they enjoyed... Right, they enjoyed having a dead-end street with no through, through traffic.
But given that this will have a, somewhat of a pedestrian easement, what was that response to that, when you-
I don't think there's an issue with that, they just didn't, you know, their kids are playing out in the, in the dead-end, and they just didn't want the cars out there.
Rocky Lane is just, what, a dirt path?
Right.
That backyard?
Where.
Where that pointer is, right there.
Right yards.
That's Rocky Lane.
Rocky.
Right.
And I think another item you mentioned was the security, kind of eyes on the street. By addressing putting windows up front in the, each one of the properties, does that satisfy the city?
Yes.
The garages are gonna be there, garage doors.
Right, in the elevations that we have, there'd be attachment-
So you do, yeah, you do have the windows.
Attachment five, there are second-story windows, so in order to have some consistency, there would have to be some that were operational.
Well, they're all operational.
They're all operational. What is the take from the residents in terms of two-story versus single-story, because predominantly all the houses there are all single-story, correct?
On Don Raphael, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, just, you can't get the square footage, and get the cars, you know, get the garage space and everything else on the smaller lots, you just can't.
I mean, taking it from the 6,000 square foot lot to the 2,700, given that scenario, you can't do that.
You know, and, you know, the good thing, I think on your R1 setbacks in the rear, I think you can go down to five foot, if I recall correctly, and the, I believe the shortest distance between the house and the rear lots on these currently is 16 feet, that's the minimum.
How close together are these houses?
Uh, 10 feet, from side to side, 10 feet, yeah.
Five on each side.
Well, five and five.
Five and five, yeah.
But two, they are connected.
Right.
Yeah, there's two homes on one property.
No, they each have their own property, but two of them are connected.
It's like, they're called duets.
They share a wall.
Duets, yes.
They do share a wall.
Yep.
So these duets?
Kind of, yeah, they're called duets, for-sale duets, okay, so they would have, they do share a common, it's like a townhouse kind of a deal, but-
It's not the ones we're seeing by the other development over here, correct? Those are seen individual.
Cornerstone, KB Homes.
Yeah, KB Homes, those are individual.
Those are detached. So moving over to Design 2.7, with regard to the sidewalks, so, you know, the city requires these improvements on both sides of the street, and our staff spoke of needing a safe path for the disabled, the ADA, to be in compliance. Can you speak towards that, please?
Well, you know, again, I think that's subject to opinion, I, you know, these are private streets. Again, I've done, I've done PDs that have no sidewalks. We're not really, and I'll, you know, Rod can probably, and Ted can both speak probably more on the ADA issue with you, but we don't think there's an ADA compliance issue with residential subdivision. It's not a commercial type of project, it's a single-family residence, but if that's a sticking point with the city, I really don't have, it's not that big of a deal for me to add another sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
The problem, the problem is, is that it will, to get, make sure we have enough room for cars to park on that other side, we'll need to-
What are you talking about?
Well, on the side that we don't currently show the sidewalk, it will affect-
So the east side homes will have the sidewalk, or the west side homes?
But couldn't the, couldn't the, that parking be reconfigured? Maybe turn it in less park, parking, turn it a different way, or something like that in your design?
Well, what I mean by that, if we add sidewalk on the other side of the street, we will have to push the houses further back, meaning there's less-
Taking away their backyard, on both ends.
Right.
What side has a sidewalk currently, or what side will?
Is it the west side?
The west side?
Where on here?
It's to-
Don Raphael.
Don Raphael's side.
Okay.
So it's the, where the basin is, so you'd have, you know, the pedestrian walkway to the, to the basin.
Oh, there it is, got it.
Can you, can you show the audience, Donna, on that, what they're talking about? Because they don't all have, have the information that we have up here. Can you show us?
I don't think it's on there.
You don't have that one?
I don't, I should have.
All right, I'm sorry.
And the streets are, am I reading it 17 feet?
You know, Rod, you wanna-
34 feet.
34 feet?
That's from curb to curb.
Curb to curb. Oh, yeah, 34, so 17 apiece.
You know, there's not gonna be too much ability to, to park on one side just because of the closeness of the driveways, so really the only opportunity to park on street would be at the basin area, just because there's no driveways there.
Okay, so, but that could all be adjusted in the plan?
Not really.
Oh, you're talking about the actual basin?
Well-
On the, by the sidewalk.
You know, where we have parking on one side of the street, you know, we call out that you can park on that side of the street, but just because of the driveway configuration, there's not gonna be too many, too much opportunity to do that, other than where the basin is, that's why we put it on that side of, of the street.
So is there a compromise that you can propose here?
Well, we're adding more than enough parking on site, we have two in the driveway and two in the garage.
So that, that limitation of parking wouldn't be an issue, so you could comply with this ADA issue with the sidewalk on the other side of the street, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm just telling you that we'll have to set the house back for that.
Okay.
I'm not sure why we would have to set the house back, because he has larger front yards than is required in like the R1, which would be 10 feet, and he's offering 20 feet, and normally if a sidewalk is involved, then we start the property line back of sidewalk because it's a public sidewalk, but in this case, it's a private sidewalk, so there would be no property line at back of sidewalk.
Okay.
So I don't think we'd need to move the house.
Well, the 10 feet is to the house, not to the garage, so you need, you need-
You need the 20 feet for the garage.
You need the 20 feet for the driveway.
20 feet for the driveway.
You don't want the car takes up the 20 feet.
Right.
You don't want the house back.
So all these surrounding homes are single-story?
Right.
Going to two-story?
The apron's gonna be there anyway.
So you're gonna be looking down at somebody's backyard?
Uh, well, there's that potential, well, the way these are, the way these are configured, though, you're not really, these are side yard houses, so you really don't, there's a, there's a door, and there's a garage on a lot of these, you don't really, I don't think you intrude, you don't look down on them, I don't think there's an issue with that. Yeah, right.
So these are bedrooms, probably.
And those are looking-
Right here in these new-
Yeah, there'll be bedroom, that'll be a bedroom, yeah. Bedroom.
Has windows on top.
With a window.
Right.
You're talking, was it 20? You said that some of the yards are 20 feet or 16?
Yeah, they're up to 22, I think.
The backyards are what?
No, up to 22 feet from the house to the, to the back of the yard.
The line.
To the, to the property line.
And you got there five feet.
You gotta stagger the front on each of the windows.
You wanna come in?
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Rod Hawkins, Hawkins and Associates Engineering, I just was gonna remind Troy that as we look at the plan, there's a 16-foot minimum, but we've, but we were asked by staff to stagger the front of the houses, so you're not looking down just one row, you know, at flush. So even though some of the houses would have enough room to move back five feet, the adjacent, the adjacent structure is already set back, so I guess not all the yards would be impacted, the full five feet, but a number of them would be.
Okay.
And again, I just, I, I think we dispute with staff or have a difference of opinion. American Disabilities Act is, ADA, is to set up for public accommodations to commercial and properties that are gonna be used by the public, so it doesn't really apply in this, in this instance, you know, as Troy said, PD, we do them all the time without sidewalks, it's not, it's private, private street, private houses, it's not an ADA issue, but if we're more than willing to put the sidewalk, that's-
Okay, we're more than willing to put the sidewalk in? Okay.
Donna, I, if you could, just clarify for me, because in your staff report, and in, and I apologize if it didn't work, you mentioned that we are consistent with our storm drainage and the basin, the way we're treating the water. One section of the, on page 231, page six of 17, you mentioned item number 13, that you questioned whether we were, we were in compliance with LID guidelines, because we don't show swales in front of individual houses, but then you said we were consistent with storm drains. I believe we are consistent, I don't think we need to show swales in front of individual lots where we're going into a private street and being, and the water's being treated at the basin to take care of the state requirements for low-impact development, but I just wanted to clarify there, because it just seems like an inconsistency, because you mentioned in, I'm sorry, one of the ones that you had on your-
Right, the general plan policy, I said it was consistent with that.
Correct, and I think we're fine as long, if we ended up trying to put swales in between these, the concrete aprons for the driveways, we're just gonna, with holes, basically, in front of each, and the idea of swales in, and again, in R1 subdivisions where we're going, to public, public facilities, public streets, trying to treat the water from a private property before it gets to the public. In this case, it's a private street, the HOA will be the collective owner of the street and the basin, so we'll collect all that water and treat it, we have it set up to treat in the basin, so I just want to make sure that-
Right, I wasn't suggesting that you needed to have the swales there, because I understood, you know, where the curb is and where the sidewalk and the apron is, I just, I had mentioned that you should work with the city engineer if there's any sort of like grading or any, anything on the property that would assist in the collection and percolation of storm water. I wasn't specifically saying swales along the street there, I'm sorry if that led you to believe that.
Just with regard to the, to the connectivity, again, plan development allows you to make allowances to differ from your policy, as Troy stated, I mean, we've got the neighbors that would rather have what they've had for years, their private little, in, dead-end street where the kids can play, but we've satisfied fire and garbage collection, we, everybody's satisfied.
Yeah, so if everybody's satisfied, then that's a non-issue.
Yeah.
It's just not in compliance, and that's pretty typical of the plan development. Okay, and you've mentioned that you will provide the concrete pad as well?
Yes.
And, let's see, crime prevention, policy design 3.2?
What's that?
We brought that up with opening windows, so there could be eyes on the street.
Well, as stated, all the windows are functional windows.
I got a quick question on that basin, how deep do you propose that basin will be, approximately?
Four to five feet.
Four to five?
Four to five.
And the side slopes, I'm four, five to one.
Okay, because I know that they can get full, as you were saying, Donna, it'll, with good rain, it'll fill it up, which becomes-
Well, I think we have decent perk rates, and I, and I think the way that these are designed are with additional French drains in there, so they do work functionally, so we'll do, we will hit sand with French drain, so they, you know, it does, you know, on rains that we saw today, probably not, it'd probably be swimming pool.
What's it gonna look like?
Pardon me? It should be in your packet.
Yeah.
Why is that basin?
Okay, all right. It's, what is it?
That's what I was hoping.
I have a question about the enhanced landscape, doesn't it look like there's a lot of room for much landscaping, so can you give me a clue what you plan to put in here to soften it?
Well, there's gonna be, you know, I don't know, we haven't gotten to, you know, a landscape detail on these things.
You haven't gotten the plan yet for the landscape.
Right, but I mean, we'll work, we'll work with staff to make sure that it's compliant not only with current, you know, standards with, having to do with drought tolerant situations, but-
I'd like to see a final on that before I, I want a better idea of the kind of landscaping.
Right, well, landscaping plans and irrigation plans are a condition of project approval. Normally, when a city requires enhanced landscaping, they mean instead of like a 15-gallon tub, the, it's a 24-inch box, it's bigger landscaping, or instead of putting 10 flower plants together, maybe you add 15, or make it 20, so you, you kind of pump it up so it's, doesn't take so long to come to a mature aesthetic.
So staff suggested the dual-use, not the, not the dual-use basin, but the park in Loufee, and where do you sit with that?
I, you know, I don't even know what that fee amounts to.
You know, I don't know, I just put that down as she was, I don't know where it is.
Right, the calculations actually come out to .24 acres, and so based on another project that had a similar requirement, the acreage would be determined at final map time, whatever is the fair value for .24 acres.
Okay, and just like a, just like a guesstimate, so that he, because he doesn't know what the fee is at all, without a final-
How much is an acre of land? Well, I think when I kind of, when I calculate it out, it came to approximately 20,000, 24,000.
Total?
Yes, total, one time.
So approximate fee of, of that amount, approximate?
Okay.
And how do you sit with that?
That's, that's something I can live with.
Okay, so, okay, on the, on the, the park in Loufee, and then can we go over the amenities that staff has mentioned with regard to these changes in the, the standards?
Okay, so, I'm, again, I'm going by the final resolution number 15, which addresses those, is that where everybody wants to focus in on here? So, again, we've enhanced landscaping, which is fine, colored concrete at the crosswalk, that's fine, vinyl, instead of wood, I, like I said, I mentioned that, I don't, I only like the vinyl concept, I'd rather stick with wood on the rear lots and between homes, and then as it faces Ward, we would do an upscale masonry wall where we wouldn't typically have a fence.
And would that compromise then, suffice then, for staff?
Well, staff has recently been, well, not recently, but has been directed to avoid wooden fences where possible, and to stick with vinyl fencing for the aesthetics because of the, the water tends to fade out sections of the fence and-
And rot and warp and so on.
And I get, I get that where it's, where it's facing the public, okay? But between homes, you're not, nobody's gonna see it between, other than those two property owners, and, you know- And, you know, wood fences are done all over. And I, and I do understand looking at a wood fence from a street standpoint, from Ward and, and from the private street standpoint, looking into things and making sure that it looks decent. But not only, you know, I'm, again, proposing a decorative masonry wall on Ward, but the wood fence gates on each individual as they face would be maintained by the HOA. Okay?
Okay.
So the, the fence, the only fences that would still remain wood would be the rears and the between each home.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions with regard to that vinyl-wood compromise that the developers proposing?
I have a question.
Yes.
Looking at the, the site map, there are currently wooden fences there that are the backyards of existing houses. Do you intend to leave those or were you going to replace them?
I would, the intention would be to replace whatever's damaged and leave the what is in good shape.
Where would that be?
Along the west side and the east side, right?
West side, east side and, and south side.
And the south side.
And then here would be some wrought iron for the EVA.
Right.
Ma'am, would you like to step up to the podium, please, and give us your name and city of residence once again, please?
My name is Rosa Medrano, M-E-D-R-A-N-O, and I live 2924 Ward Avenue. My property is the one with a pool. And I have the bio fence, which he's, he's saying that it's cheap. It's not cheap. I paid quite a bit of money for that. And it's from Ward Avenue all the way to the end of my property, there. And according to his map that I seen on the computer, there's three homes that are going to be backed up to my home. I have a pool back there. He says it's going to be two stories, so I'm gonna have lickadoos looking over into my fence 24/7. He says he's gonna have a 34-foot road into that property. Is a garbage man gonna be able to make that turn and come back out? And he's gonna have 70 cars coming out of that every morning and coming back out of that property on Chavez Road. And we have kids, many, many children that live on Ward Avenue. And in the morning, they walk down Ward Avenue to catch the bus and they walk back. And they play in that street. And that's my concern, the children. And what is he gonna do? He said he's gonna replace all the wooden fences. I have bio fence. He doesn't like it? Well, what is he gonna do about me? You know, he has not spoken to me and I have over 100 feet there. You know, I paid quite a bit of money for that. It's, it costs more to put bio fence than it does redwood fence. Because I, I had a redwood fence there and it rotted. And that's why. Because there's a lot of water that commute, that stands in that area because the high point is my, my home. When it rains, all the water runs down to Roselle. And when they put those homes in, it's gonna, you know, they're gonna have a lot of water, standing water. And I want to know. He said it's five foot deep, but how wide is it? Is it gonna hold all that water? It's gonna be accumulated there in those 26, 27 place, you know, homes? Where's it gonna go? Is it gonna run north, south, east, west, or what? You know, that's my concern.
Thank you for voicing your concern. Is there anything else?
And he didn't say anything about replacing the fences.
Well, let's, let's ask him to, to...
You know, I don't mind...
Address your concerns.
Having them to develop that area because it, it's a nice place to have it developed. But my concern is the children.
Well, thank you.
And if they're gonna have children there too, they're gonna have children walking down that street to go to the bus stop also.
Thank you for bringing those concerns to our attention then. Tracy?
Troy.
To address the fence issue...
I'm sorry, it's Troy.
Troy, I'm sorry.
To address the fence issue, again, we're not looking to replace anybody's fence if it's in a good shape. And, and I don't, that's fine. If her, her fence is in good shape and she wants to keep it, I have no problem leaving it there. That's, we're not trying to create work for ourselves. Regarding water, we're taking all the wa, you know, I think what's proposed is a valley gutter across Ward. And we're taking all our own water. All our site water is going into our basin. It's not going down Roselle, other than what's traveling currently down there. Okay? So, in other words...
So at the entrance of, quote, Chavez, that water will be seeping south?
Right, right.
And going to the basin?
All the lots, all the street. Everything goes to the basin.
It'll have a down slope from the corner, east side of the lot up top, west into Chavez.
Again, the natural drainage on Ward will remain probably the same. I mean, it's all gonna...
Flow, yeah.
Flow. So everything on Ward flows how it's flowing. But everything from that property line in all stays on our property.
So getting back to the fencing and Ms. Medrano's concern, so where she has 100 feet, I think it is a vinyl, are you planning a shared fencing between, you know, these, between your area and your, your immediate neighbors? Is, who's gonna be responsible for, you know, is she fencing 100 feet of your, of your proposed project, is what I'm...
No, her, her fence is on the property, the, the property line between her and us.
That's what I, exactly what I'm saying. So what fencing are you gonna provide? Are you gonna provide fencing for your, your, your PUD? And it will be wooden?
Wood.
Okay. So, so Ms. Medrano, then regarding, regarding your fence, yours is on your side of the property that you would maintain and his is on his side of the property in which the homeowners association would maintain. Is that correct? No? Not that? No?
We wouldn't create another fence against hers.
Okay, what would...
Her fence would be the fence that separates the two properties.
So she's funding your project?
Well...
She's not funding the project, but that's fencing part of that. And so, in other words, you know, that, that, that could be a liability issue. If she doesn't maintain her fence, then, you know, there could be problems crossing.
Well, okay. I guess, I guess the, the, you know, we all live in, or I live in a subdivision. I have, live at the end of a cul-de-sac and I have six neighbors behind me. Okay? We, we all share a fence.
That's right. Shared fencing is what I'm referring to.
Right. And so I don't, there's not my fence and then the person behind me has another fence.
No, exactly right.
It's a shared fence.
So are you planning to put up a shared fence between all of these properties that run the perimeter of this project?
No. What we would do is there would be, wherever the fence is falling down and, or in bad shape, we would take, tear down that fence and replace it with a wood fence.
I think the question is where her fence is, are you gonna connect from here and then go forward?
Yes.
So she's gonna have this here and then you're gonna connect here and go forward.
Right.
So if something happens with this fence, who's responsible for it? Is it the private property or is it her property that's gonna be responsible for that under feet?
Well, I, again...
If it gets kicked in, melt, falls...
Right. Well, during construction, if we damaged her fence, we would...
If you damage it, the people who purchase it, people that are gonna be living there...
Okay, well, I guess, again, the analogy goes back to I have neighbors behind me and if that person, it's between the homeowners. It's, I don't know how else to address it.
Is that gonna be written in your, your HOA? Because that's gonna be part of maintaining the fence, right?
No, the HOA will not maintain the rears or sides of the fences. It will...
Something about discoloring and then you was talking about that's gonna be, the fencing will be maintained?
The fencing will be maintained wherever it's visually, where it's visible on the street. So in other words, on the Ward Avenue piece, side, instead of wood fence or vinyl fence, we're gonna upgrade it to a masonry wall.
I'm buying that property.
Pardon me?
I'm a, I'm a potential home buyer. And I'm looking at this property. I'm going, okay, so I see the back and I'm looking, I said, well, okay, well, this 100 feet of fence is different than that down there. So how it happens, who's responsible? Now, I'm a, I'm an agent trying to sell this property, okay? And I'm going to the city to find out who's responsible for the property on that, that fence on that property line. As a developer, you've developed it, it's done, you're gone. So now it's a city issue, okay? Of who's gonna fight over that because it went by, because we said, oh, well, it's a good, you know, it's a neighbor thing. That's not a good neighbor fence. You know, a good neighbor fence is even, you know, is opposite. You know a good neighbor fence when you see one. That's not a good neighbor fence. So then we have that issue where she's already, we already have a neighbor that is sort of uncomfortable with the idea of the property being produced right there. Now we saying that we're not gonna replace your fence because it's not part of the damaged fence. We only gonna repair, if it needs repair, we're gonna repair it. So we're not gonna replace that part and we're just gonna move on. So then after we've built and go, now it's your responsibility between you and your neighbor how that gets repaired. See, we don't wanna fall in that, we don't wanna, as, as we go forward for our general plan and how we looking at how properties fit in to communities, we don't wanna be looked at as we overlook that. And now all of a sudden, we're into a litigation situation because we did not solve that issue. So we need to find out if you're gonna be replacing the whole fence and if you're only gonna be replacing part of the fence, how is that gonna be verbiage? How is that gonna be legally identified?
You know what? To tell you the truth, I've, I've never had this come up before.
You ever just use somebody else's fence?
Yes, all the time. Doing it in Modesto.
Okay.
So, you know, doing that, did you get some kind of permission for shared fence? Did you agree, like, that you would...
All the fences, the perimeter fences against my property existed. And there was always, you know, and I think I've talked to this lady here when I was making my rounds the other day. And I told her just that. If you're, if the fence is damaged between our two properties, we'll replace the fence.
And is that forever? Or is that just initially, initially with your project? Are you just gonna replace it?
Yeah, initially with the project, right.
Okay. So then where's the responsibility then afterwards if...
It's the homeowners. It's between two homeowners, just like it's, you know, with my neighbors, it's between me and them and do we agree to share the cost of a broken fence or whatever else?
Exactly right. But then you have the case of Ms. Medrano, that her 100 feet of vinyl fencing, that's her existing fence. And if it's damaged, you would offer to pay that? But maybe she wants further protections? Maybe she wants a fence on the other side?
If that's, if that's what you need me to do on her fence, I'll do that.
Okay.
I just don't see what, I don't, I don't understand it, but I would do it.
Well, because there's exposure to that homeowner with her fence. And you have the responsibility of, in closing, your development with your, with, with some type of fencing. And that's what, you know, staff is talking about is, is fencing. So that, that's, I think that that's an important issue so that there aren't any civil issues later. I think that that really needs to be addressed because that's an exposure. It's an exposure for, for Mrs. Medrano.
I have a question. So wouldn't, wouldn't the same hold true for all the, all the shared fences on the other side of the property?
Right.
Yeah, I just, you know, it's, it's one of these things where I've never, I've never had this come up before, seriously. And it's, it's one of those things where, you know, when we're, as developers, we're going in there and if we cause damage, we replace it. Once, once it's up and, and everything's done and we've replaced bad, either bad pickets or replaced a whole fence because it was in bad shape. And then we sell the lot. It's just like I have a realtor, I have a real estate company also, well, we sell resale homes, okay? So part of the whole deal is, you know, we're not, nobody's promising anybody that there's liabilities for fence maintenance or whatever else. It's between those homeowners.
So when you go to sell that home and that homeowner stipulates on that real estate contract, who's responsible for that fence? How do they get the responsibility?
That just never, it's a shared responsibility. It's, it's that way, that...
I mean, as a real estate agent, you're gonna go around to the other neighbor and say, hey, you know, you're gonna be part of this deal that I'm doing here with this person that's on the other side of the fence, but it's your fence and we trying to figure out who's gonna be responsible for it because they're...
It's a shared, it's, it's a property line. It's just, that's how it is.
Oh, another, okay, I got you.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm just gonna speak in terms of some experience on this. It, to where there's a fence, I bought the house, my fence that was their fence, really their fence, fell. I agreed and he agreed as a conversation, communication, we both fixed it. But it was more of a, just a communication piece on that. And it's hard to realistip, I think personally, to stipulate a clause to, you're in charge of this. It's, like you mentioned, it's hard to put into a contract.
Well...
But I do, I do get this.
This is like this, in, in some parts of wherever, you have the good neighbor fence. Insurance companies insure your property and will insure part of that fence if they know if it's a good neighbor's fence. If it's not a good neighbor's fence, then it's gonna determine whose responsibility is it. See, in your homeowner's insurance, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an issue of proving who's, you know, if you wanna have them, the shared responsibility. It's, it's gonna be hard trying to prove that.
So Ms. Medrano brought up, she's the only, I guess she's the only neighbor here that wants to address her fence issue as, as she testified. So...
Okay, we, you know, I have addressed this before with the property owners, Mrs. Chavez, because every year they, they have somebody disc that property because the city wants the weeds out. And this past year, when they discs, they threw rocks, you know, and the, the discer propelled, propelled the rocks and it went into the fence, damaged the fence. I went to Mrs. Chavez and I told her of what had happened because my daughter works at home and she, she heard it. And she seen, you know, well, she didn't see it, she heard it. So I went to Ms. Chavez and I asked her about it. And she says, well, I don't know what to do. And I says, well, you know, I have a homeowner's insurance, so I'm gonna turn it in. And she says, do whatever you have to do. And, you know, so I backed away. I turned it in, they paid for it. Now, if the developer comes in, they're gonna be doing a lot of disking real close to the fence and everything. What my concern is, he doesn't like my fence. Is he gonna tear, you know, I mean, you know, there's a possibility that he, you know, the, the contractors that he gets to, you know, to do the work. If something happens to my fence, is he gonna replace it for wood? You know, I don't want that. I want my fence. You know, I paid a lot of money. The, even if you get the best redwood fences, redwood fencing, which is the best, it's cost minimal to what I paid for my, and, you know, I, I don't care, but, you know, they're gonna have a homeowners association. Why don't they put that in the contract? If anything happens to the fence, the homeowners is, is responsible, you know? Or like he said, if the homeowner is going to, to, to be responsible for that fence, then I have four homeowners that, well, there's, you know, I know there's other situations where they have, you know, backed up to several neighbors, but they're gonna have to, you know, just like what I did with Chavez, go over there and tell them.
Well, it, it sounds like this developer wants to accommodate the neighbors.
Well, so do I, you know.
And with regard to the fencing. So, you know, that, at least that's what I heard. And so perhaps that can be addressed separately.
You know, I wanna be a good neighbor.
Yes.
But, you know, if, if, if the developer damages my fence, I don't wanna say, well, he's gonna say, well, it's damaged, we can put wood fence. No, you know.
Okay, so perhaps can we...
You know, because he already stipulated, he didn't like it because it was cheap. It's not cheap.
Okay, well, you know, I, I just, I just wanna talk to staff for just, just one moment. Can we establish some kind of acknowledgement for good neighbor fencing?
You mean as, as in if a fence, an existing fence is damaged during construction, he replaces like for like?
Yes. Yes.
Because I'll turn it into my insurance, and that's what they do. They'll just, you know, replace the slots, 'cause they're slots.
Okay, well, so you have good and valid, legitimate questions for the developer, and as I said, I think he'll be accommodating, and as soon as he testifies, he'll, he'll let us know for sure.
You know, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna, you know, interrupt because usually, they, they say their piece, and then we get to speak, but I thought this was important because you were, you were commenting on it too. But, you know, I wanna be a good neighbor.
It was brought up by staff, and we're just gonna be more definitive about it. So Troy? It is Troy. I got it right this time. So Troy, can we establish that to remedy any further issue?
Yeah, if we damage the fence during construction, we'll replace it with like kind.
Okay.
That satisfy your needs?
Are these properties being marketed?
Are they being marketed?
'Cause it looks like a duplex to me.
As duets, as, you know, for sale.
Or they're not, is nothing, anything like that within?
Um, Modesto, there is.
Not, I'm talking about Riverbank.
There's actually some off of Glow.
Oh, yes, yeah. Glow in First Street to the right of those complexes, yeah.
You're gonna have two properties that's gonna be occupying at one fence? A, a one set of, you know?
Four units. Four, four units that back into the, to her fence.
I just have an issue with the, the dead end part. Because aesthetically, it looks like in some future years, there's gonna be a highway going there, the way it looks here.
Well, like I said, there will.
I know his house is there, but the way this road ends.
We'll have it planted with, at the end with either trees or some nice.
I've seen dead ends before. Okay.
Is, is there anything that, that there, that we haven't, have not addressed that they're out of compliance, or is there anything that, that escaped us here?
Anything done?
Pretty good at hitting them all.
Can't get us, can't knock us for not being thorough, right? Okay.
But we do have, you know, to let other public comment through besides the developer and.
Yes.
One neighbor.
Okay.
I will review this.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak to? Item 3.2, Ward Villas.
Yes, my house is, the one he was just talking about, my house is.
Okay, who are you?
Yes.
Lucretia Castillo.
Hello, Lucretia, and you are a neighbor?
I'm, I'm the house in the very bottom corner.
Address?
2884 Don Raphael. Okay, my question is, is that, we've, I've always had a problem there with people parking on that end. And I have like a space about this big as far as the sidewalk, and people tend to block, and then there's my driveway. People always park there, and I end up having to have people move because they block my driveway. So is there any way that from my driveway over, they can actually make a parking space? Yeah.
So you park right here?
Yeah, my driveway.
You're talking about a dump truck backing right here, so is there always gonna be a car right there?
No, I mean, I have no sidewalk there, for one. What it does is it goes like, my driveway is here, then I have a space like this, and then it goes up the dirt. And so whatever it does, you know, comes down that street, they want to visit this person over here, they come, they park here, and then they're blocking my driveway like this far. I'm constantly telling people, don't, you know, to move the car, 'cause they're constantly blocking me in. Is there any way that like from my driveway over, they can make an actual parking spot? Okay.
Is there some type of compromise for her? Is there something that could happen there?
Well, right, right in front and then just to the side of her property would be the emergency vehicle access. So there would be wrought iron fencing, and I'm assuming it will be posted that no parking there.
So you'll have, yeah.
Did you, did you understand what Donna mentioned?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Right here, there will be a basin and emergency vehicle access of 20 feet wide with a wrought iron fence, and then that will be posted, no parking, because the fire department will need access through here.
Okay, that I would really prefer to have, just 'cause I'm just so tired of people parking in front of my house and blocking my driveway.
Yeah.
They don't listen, 'cause none of them speak English. It's like.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak to? Item 3.2, Ward Villas. So for the record, no one else? One moment, please. This email? Yes, the email. Email for the record by Judy Garcia.
Right, that came in on Wednesday, the 13th, and her questions had, had to do with improving rocky lane for connectivity. And I did send her an email to explain to her that the city doesn't have rights of way through here enabled, in order to be able to do that at this time, and this project would not be part of that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So the city's responsibility ends where?
The city has a parcel that we own right here, but there's little, if any, rights of ways purchased. This is just the property lines of all these properties here.
Okay.
The front property lines with no rights of way.
Okay. So any more questions for the developers?
The only thing I noticed is we didn't go through all the amenities. We talked about the crosswalk and the fencing, and, see, the crosswalk, the fencing.
Okay, so we'll, yeah, we'll finish talking about these. I did bring it up to you, so let's go through that list if we could.
Okay, so referencing item 15 of the conditions, that large plants, more dense plantings, we agree to that, colored concrete bricks crosswalk across the ward, we agree to that. Again, we talked about the fencing, and I think we've dealt with that. Upgraded garage doors, we are doing carriage doors, upgraded carriage doors.
Okay.
French doors, I don't have any issues with French doors versus sliders.
Okay.
And outdoor outlets, that's code, we have to do that anyway. And for electric motors and, and benches at stormwater basin, so I guess that's all of them. We're already doing benches on the stormwater basin.
And not on the list are the other things that we've already discussed?
Oh, exterior lighting. I don't know what, really what that means, but if it's just enhanced lights at the garage doors or something, that's fine too.
Decorum.
Right, that'd be something decorative to go with the carriage doors.
Okay, so have all these outstanding issues then been resolved?
As far as the amenities, yes.
Okay. And, and then your accommodation to these other outstanding issues that weren't in compliance, then, then they will be in compliance, save for the wood fencing, is that correct?
The wood fencing and then connectivity.
Connectivity, so which, that's been resolved utilizing, well, for the mere fact that the, the neighbors don't want that connection, they want that private privacy, and then a wrought iron fence would be going in place, is that correct?
Right.
I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on that. Okay.
Then we're good on all the other architectural features of the homes, right?
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else to speak? Mrs. Madrano? Make it brief, please. We've got a lot, long ways to go.
All I wanna know is if they're gonna have a utility pole for lights going into Chavez, you know, you know, they didn't say anything about a utility pole for a light, streetlight.
There will be streetlights.
There will be streetlights.
Streetlights.
Okay.
Is it underground or above ground? She talking about a utility pole?
Well.
Underground.
She's looking for light, lighting.
Lights have to be above ground.
Yeah.
And then they're also providing a fire hydrant at the stubbed end of Chavez.
Yeah, everything else will be underground, you know, as far as dry utilities in the project. I think Ward probably has to stay, I think there's a hole in Ward that has to stay there, but everything in the subdivision will be underground.
Okay.
As far as like the back, where the circle's gonna be, how far from that back wall is the houses gonna be coming in from?
You mean at the dead end of Chavez?
Yeah, how far from back there, forward, towards the front, is the last house gonna be?
I believe the stubbed end of the street to the property line is seven feet. If I spelled that correctly. It's nine feet.
Okay, so nine feet from my back wall, there's gonna be a house. Let me get the rest of some.
Okay, so this is you.
Oh, the backyard.
What, what, what's your question?
Oh, right here.
Yeah, it's at five feet from this back line, back wall.
Is that gonna actually be able to sit there? I mean, because.
Yep.
When I bought this house, I wanted to put a pool in the back, and they told me I couldn't because that wall, it's like, when I walk out and I look over to my neighbor behind me, there's like an eight-foot drop. And then their property. And the only thing that's there is like a cinder block type wall. I mean.
It's a retaining wall, probably.
I mean, that ain't gonna fall?
Well, during the construction documents, we would address that and make sure that it's suitable for it.
Okay, 'cause that's, that's the real concern, is if I can't put a pool back there, and you're putting a two-story house, you know, I just can't see how that's gonna stand. I hope so.
As the engineer.
Does that conclude all the public comment then for this evening?
Thank you.
On item 3.2, Ward Villas? You'll have to come up to the, you'll have to come up, but we're, we're gonna have to conclude this, ma'am.
I know, I know, 'cause I'm running me a little bit late. They have a picture of the homes and stuff, 'cause we haven't seen anything, you know?
I think that, that all of that is, is, is it?
I looked on the computer, there's nothing on the computer.
It is on there, but you can have my copy.
Okay, if we have any other concerns, who do we address, you know, after we leave here?
That would be me, the planning and building manager.
And your name?
Donna.
Donna, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for everyone's comments this evening on Ward Villas. So at this time, we're gonna be closing the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any further questions?
No, I think it was pretty well addressed.
Okay, I think so too. I don't think we missed anything. Okay, so.
I wanna go home.
I make a motion.
There are three resolutions, one with the draft ordinance attached.
And it's now called item 3.2, but it's the verbiage from 3.4, just to make it clear for you.
There's three resolutions to this, right?
Correct. Your attachments, one, two, and three, to the staff report. Page 244 is the first one.
Where are the others, Donna? 244.
And then 247.
Oh, right behind, my bad.
And 250. Oh, that, 250 is the ordinance for the council, and then the other resolution's 253.
253.
244.
247 and 253.
247 and 253.
Correct.
Were you, were you moving? I was.
Does somebody wanna take over?
Okay, the 3.2, right? Okay. Okay. I make a motion to approve item 3.2, Ward Avenue, Ward Avenue Villas, general plan amendment, 01215, a rezone and a vesting tentative map proj, that's it, right? And a tentative map, 012015.
Now, I might mention the, the third one, the one that's the tentative map, is the one with the conditions of approval that we discussed. So it would be modifications as discussed with staff on that one.
And I approve it along with the modifications as discussed with staff.
For a call vote? Chair Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vilebouda?
Yes.
So then this item will be going to the city council meeting of February 9th.
Thank you. So we wanna move item 3.3, and then 3.4 last.
Well, the housing element next?
Yes, housing element.
Because we have consultants here that are on the clock.
Item three, item three, 3.4, wait, item three?
Point, three.
Three point.
Would be the housing element.
3.3.
The housing element. Okay, Donna?
Item 3.3, Riverbank, 2014, 2030, 2023, housing element and initial study negative declaration. Project description: The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing to review and make recommendations to the city council regarding, one, the initial study negative declaration on the housing element update 2014-2023, and, two, an amendment to the Riverbank general plan to adopt the housing element update for the 2014-2023 planning period. The proposed project is an update to the Riverbank housing element in compliance with Government Code, Section 65580. The proposed housing element update, which supports goals and policies of the city's current housing element, provides policies and implementation programs under which new housing development would be allowed. The proposed housing element includes updated policies and programs that are intended to guide the city's housing efforts through the 2014-23 planning period. Recommendation: That Planning Commission approves Resolution Number 2016-002, recommending the city council adopt the 2014-2023 housing element and housing element negative declaration, and authorize its submittal to the State Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you.
And the presentation tonight will be by David Niskanen of J.B. Anderson and Associates.
Hello, Mr. Niskanen.
Hello, thank you, chairperson and members of the commission. Like Donna said, my name is David Niskanen, work for J.B. Anderson Planning, Contract Planners for the City of Riverbank. The item we have before, we have before you tonight is the 2014 to 2023 housing element update. And to give you some background, and you've seen this item before in draft form, specifically on April 21st, 2015, we came to you with the, to recommend authorization to submit the housing element to HCD for a 60-day review. We did that, and July 13, July 13th of last year, we received a letter with written findings and required revisions to bring the housing element into compliance. to bring the housing element into compliance with state law and housing, housing element law. Since that time, from July 13 to December, we've worked with HCD on a number of revisions. We actually went through three rounds, the first one being the larger one, the last one being almost kind of like a formality. And then in December, we received a letter from them, from them saying that stating upon adoption, the city's housing element will be in compliance with state law. So we, we got that letter stating that we're pretty much good to go from this point forward. The housing element requirements, and you've seen this slide before, so I'll just kind of touch up upon it. It's one of the seven mandated elements of the general plan. The state sets a schedule for the housing element update, and years past, it's always been a four or five-year planning period. But this, this round, called the fifth cycle, is a nine-year planning period from January 2014 to September 2023. Again, it's reviewed by HCD, and it also considers the existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. The contents, simply put, include housing and employment characteristics, housing stock, supply and needs, production opportunities, housing element constraints, government and non-governmental constraints, evaluation of the previous, previous housing element programs, and then also the development of new programs moving forward. This table shows the regional housing needs, the Riverbank had a housing needs of 1,280 units spread among the income groups of very low, low-income, moderate-income, and above moderate-income groups. To address the regional housing needs, we took, we took a look at the vacant and underutilized sites within the existing city limits, including the downtown specific plan, land within the sphere of influence, and then land outside the sphere of influence, such like the proposed Crossroads West Pacific Plan. What we came up with is the city has a total available units of 3,551, and backing out the RENA requirement, that gives the city a surplus of just over 2,300 units. So for public review, and during the time that it's with HCD, that entire time, 60 days, a public review period. So different agencies have the opportunity and individuals have the opportunity to comment on it. We received comment letters from the CRLA, which is the California Rural Legal Assistance. They're a nonprofit legal group that advocates for low-income housing, homeless needs, farmworker housing, and such. So we received two comment letters in June, and they focused around just that low-income housing needs. We need to provide a little bit more analysis for homeless population, provide a little bit more programs for farmworker housing. And then October since, October 7, we received, we received another comment letter based on our revisions with HCD that focused in on homeless analysis and clarification on emergency shelters. We met with them in November and, and really laid it out on the table of what their concerns were, and we went, we discussed with them the programs that they would like to see as part of this housing element, and I'll get to the programs here in a second.
Okay.
In December, we again received another comment letter that they commended the city for revising the housing element. And keep in mind that they're reviewing each set of revisions, those three sets of revisions.
Okay.
So they kind of see where we're at every step of the way. And we included programs and policies tailored to farmworker housing, homeless needs, public participation for the next cycle, and then low-income housing, especially extremely low-income housing. And the city will continue to work with the CRLA for future housing elements. So between the, between HCD and the CRLA, we came, we came up with some updated programs for the housing element, just like to, to assist the housing development of farmworkers, to assist developers with pre-application process, try to streamline that, that process to, to assist in farmworker housing development. We also look at employee housing as a permitted use in the R1 zone. We also took a look at developmental disabilities and the Valley Mountain Regional Center to refer residents to that, that have that. And then also to, for the city to be part of the regional cooperation with Stanislaus County for overall homeless needs.
Okay.
And then we also created a program to limit the land division for, for sites that are zoned high-density residential, because that creates a kind of undue constraint if the site's too small to develop, to be developed high-density. And then of, lastly, we took a look at programs that help public involvement and engagement, like translating the notices to Spanish, partnering with local churches to get them involved in the housing element process, as well as the way we deliver the notices to the residents.
Very good.
Yeah, and then this, for the sequel part, we prepared an initial study, and the review period is 30 days, and it ended this month, January 6. We received one comment letter from the Central Valley Regional Quality Control Board that basically just stated their policies and, and requirements for future development. Didn't have anything specific to say about the housing element, but we noted that in, we have that in there. And then based on the initial study, we determined that it would not have a significant effect, significant effect on the environment, and a negative declaration has been prepared. And our recommendation today is for the Planning Commission to approve the resolution in your packet that recommends to the city council to adopt the 2014 to 2023 housing element and associated negative declaration, and authorize staff to submit to HCD for the final 90-day certification review. And John and I, of course, are here to answer any questions that you may have on this process, the housing element, really anything that you have.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good work put into this.
Good detail.
Commissioners, did you have any questions about what David just went over?
How confident are you that we've covered everything?
Very confident. Between our discussions with HCD and bringing up the housing element into state compliance, we've also, with our discussions with the CRLA, really focused in on some areas that the city does not, did not have any programs for, just like farmworker housing, really assisting developers that want to come in and, and build affordable housing, not really to help fund it, but to help them as much as we can, like identifying sites, taking an inventory of what we have available as sites that are zoned for high-density residential, and, and showing that to them, saying this is where we think you could, you could go, and we would support that, and working with them in that development process. So as far as confidence in the housing element, I think there's adequate analysis in there to, to really assist the city in developing housing for all economic segments of the city, or of the population.
Thank you very much.
Does this get circulated to some developers out there for, to bring in more housing?
Well, it's out there. So once it's, once it's certified and final, the final housing element will be available for, for the public, including developers. And in that, it has a site inventory of all the vacant sites in the city, has an inventory of all underutilized sites in the city, as well as going over some sites in the sphere of influence that are, that have the opportunity to be, opportunity to be developed. And there, it's going to be located on the website, it's going to be at City Hall, so absolutely, it's going to be available for the general public, including developers.
It is on the city's website right now.
Yes. Yeah, and it's been actually on the city's website for, gosh, close to a year now. Once we started, actually before we started the public review process, we put it on there in draft form for anyone to come in and comment on it.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Real quick, you touched on the West Side Crossroads.
Yes.
What's, what's that look like right now for you? I mean, based on this study?
I don't know if, I mean, I mean, right now, it's a proposed project. I mean, it's, we have a conceptual land use plan, and that's what we use in the housing element. That's subject to change. As far as where they're at in the process, I'm not exactly sure. But, well, for this effort, we understood that there could be a development in the future at that site. We understood that there's a proposed specific plan that developers are interested in. And then we have a conceptual land use plan, which is actually in, in the housing element as an appendix, that lays out what land uses are going to be in that area. And from there, that's how we get, how, how we, how we analyze it in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
You've grown a lot since I've seen you in the beginning. You've really improved. I thought I'd just let you know that.
So I'd like to open the, the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak towards this item 3.3, the housing element and initial, and initial study and the negative declaration? Hearing and seeing none, and then I will move to close the public hearing. Commissioners? No questions? So we'll move forward.
I move for approval of Villavousia Number 2016-002 recommending the city council adopt the 2014, 2023 housing element and the 2014-2023 housing element negative declaration and authorization to submit to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
I second it.
Okay, we'll move for a roll call vote, please.
Sarah Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vilebouda?
Yes.
Okay. Passes 4O.
Thank you very much again for staff's exhausting job on this housing element study to make sure that we're in compliance, and thank you very much.
This, this item is expected to be at the city council at the last meeting in February, February 23.
I'll reach them. Page 23.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving then to item 3.4, which in the documents here, it's listed as 3.3, but it'll be 3.4. And Donna, take it away.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending the Riverbank Municipal Code by repealing in its entirety Chapter 153, variance of Title 15, land usage, and substituting it with a new Chapter 153 variance. The project description: The proposed ordinance amendment will update the city's municipal code to make the Planning Commission the deciding body of a variance request. An appeal of the Planning Commission's decision would still be heard in public hearing by the city council. The recommendation is that the Planning Commission approves Resolution 2016-003 recommending the city council finds the project exempt under Section 15378B5 of the SEQA guidelines. The project is an organizational or administrative activity of government that will not result in direct or indirect physical changes in the environment, and approves the proposed ordinance amendment.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna, she's going to give us a little?
I'll give you a quick down and dirty. I'll say, so the proposed project is an ordinance amendment to the city zoning code that makes the Planning Commission the deciding body of a variance. Currently, our city code requires that the variance is recommended by the Planning Commission to the city council. So during their November 10, 2015 meeting, when the city council approved a variance for KB Home, they questioned why they were hearing this item. The policy land use 4.1, the city will encourage through incentives, streamlining, flexible standards, and other means, development of employment generating uses. So by streamlining this variance process, you keep the builders on track. You know, they're able to continue employing folks, and it's not held up by several months of going through this double public hearing process. The ordinance regarding variances is not a project within the meaning of SEQA, so no SEQA analysis is required. The City of Riverbank Strategic Planning Session is a plan and set of goals that Riverbank will work towards the next three years. The above action, though, is not an objective of those goals. That's a new section we're putting in all our staff reports now to keep both Planning Commission and city council on top of what our strategic goals are and how we're meeting them. So the recommendation is to recommend to the city council the approval of the amendment to the variance ordinance based upon the findings contained in the resolution. I just wanted to add too that in almost every city that I've worked for, the Planning Commission has been the deciding body for variances, and it was quite unusual for me to see that this one actually went to the city council. So your, and approval of this would pretty much bring you in line with all the other cities in the valley.
Thank you very much. So commissioners, any questions for Donna with regard to this? Okay, so then I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to item 3.4? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
My only comment, I don't have a problem with it. My only comment would be that perhaps as a matter of courtesy, we could wait until, since the new commissioners are going to be sworn in next week, that perhaps we could wait until the next meeting so that the new commissioners could have a voice in this. But it's, that's my only thought. I don't have a problem with it.
What page is the resolution on, please?
The 215?
I kind of want to.
Oh yeah, here it is. Oh no, that's, that's the recommendation.
Okay.
215. Found it, 219.
219? Item 3.4, formerly item 3.3. The ordinance, the city council repealing its entirety, Chapter 1.53. Okay?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Riverbank recommending to the city council the approval of the ordinance amending the Riverbank Municipal Code by reappealing it, repealing in its entirety, Chapter 153, variance of title. Is that what number is that? XV is 10, 15?
Yeah.
15. Land usage and substituting it with the new Chapter 153 variance.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Sarah Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vilebouda?
Yes.
All right, passes 4O.
Okay. Moving over to item four, commission items. Item 4.1, planning commissioner appointments were notified January 13. They are Joan Stewart, congratulations, Edward Tobacco, and Larry King. Newly, congratulations to all of you. Newly appointed commissioners will be given the oath of office at the January 26 city council meeting at 6:00 PM, and the council will also recognize myself and John Degali for our years of service on the Planning Commission Board. And so thank you very, very much. I'll speak on behalf of John Degali, and, and hopefully he'll be there on January 26 as, as, as well as myself. And we invite you all, bring snacks.
Actually, we did hear from John, and fortunately, he's not going to be able to make it, but we would like to honor you and.
Thank you. I feel honored. I feel so honored. Oh my gosh, I feel incredibly honored. I, oh, I'm, I am.
She spotted him when she walked in.
I am speechless. I thought, gee, isn't that beautiful? I said that, right? But I didn't think it was for moi. Oh my gosh, that's gorgeous. And by Karen. Thank you, Karen. You did a beautiful job. Designs by Karen are Riverbank's own.
Yes.
Florist. Thank you so much. I just, just want to say something very briefly. It's been a very long meeting. I want to thank my commissioners for all your hard work for all these years. You know, we take this job very seriously. Our heart is in it. We're constantly thinking about what we can do to benefit the residents in the City of Riverbank. about what we can do to benefit the residents in the City of Riverbank. I want to thank the staff, John Anderson here tonight, thank you, John. Donna, Janet Smaln, and our friend here from Churchill White. Without you, our job would be so much more difficult trying to sort through, but you make it so easy for us in many ways. The rest of the stuff is all hard, making those big decisions sometimes that, that can be, you know, comes, comes close to the heart sometimes, because we definitely want to make the best decisions in every, every item that comes before the Planning Commission. Thank you again for a wonderful eight years, it's a little bittersweet for me, I want to hang on in some regards, and I will, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Great job.
Thank you. So we're going to move on then to number five, county referral correspondence information. Item 5.1, 39th Annual Stanislaus County Planning Commissioners Workshop is Saturday, February 27th, 2016.
There will be a wonderful speaker, that's Michael Jerky, and he will be talking about the Subdivision Map Act, SEQA, and planning and zoning law, and you don't have to be a planning commissioner to attend. If you're an engineer, if you're just, you know, somebody who's interested in the planning field, they will be accepting everybody, so. And there, it's morning from like 8:30 to noon, and there will be a light breakfast serve, coffee and rolls.
Great, thank you so much. Moving to item number six.
Hold on a sec, and if you want to attend, just let me know so I could register you. Are you?
We have a February 2nd deadline.
And I'm going to, and I'm going to be picking up Joan. So when you remind me, then just make sure, write Patty, pick up Joan. Okay. Six upcoming, upcoming meeting agenda items, 6.1 Diamond Bar West, final subdivision map, applicants are working on the plans for utilities and streets towards a grading permit. Okay? Item 6.2 Diamond Bar West, again, architecture and site, site plan review, application to be submitted within a couple of weeks. Moving to number seven, new business, item 7.1 Crossroads Shopping Center, Pad C update, Panda Express is open, Tapole, Dicky's Barbecue Pit, AT&amp;T Store open, and Five Guys, yay!
They're all getting close.
Nice job, new business. Item 7.2 Crossroads Shopping Center, Pad G update, next to Bevmo, America's Tire plans in review. So at this time, I'd like to...
Can I say something, or?
You have to ask me.
Oh yeah. No, I wanted to bring this...
Mother may I.
Yeah. No, in, we were in Aptos, and I don't know if you, in this area, you drive in town, they have these units out by the, on the street, these big green light, gray-like boxes that hold a lot of, I don't know what they hold, by the traffic lights, have you seen those? You guys know what I'm talking about?
Like electrical boxes?
Yeah, the electrical boxes, those big ones, those gray ones. Well, in Aptos, every area that was there, they painted, city painted art of what represented that little area.
Oh, how cool.
And it, it, from what I heard, it stopped any type of vandalism on them or graffiti to them, because it was art. And it represented who that little area was, and it was a neat feature, I think, if we could look at that.
Well, we actually are, the City of Hayward has a similar program. I've taken two different tours with them, and it's part of the information that John Anderson and I, and I are working on for City Council for art and murals. And so that'll be coming before too long.
It just brought the character of the town a little more. And the other is, I don't know, I finally got my email on my phone through the city. So you guys can do that, just to wonder, through the, on my, on my phone, I got my city email on here now, so.
He's added his city email to his phone, so he'll have access on your phone.
Yeah, my, what is it, the dot org?
Yeah, right, your riverbank.org. Yes, I have that on mine. The positive thing is you're always connected, you know what's going on. The bad thing is sometimes you get emails on the weekends from developers, and you feel like, oh, I better answer this.
Very good.
Encourages you to work.
Yes, yes.
That's very nice.
That's what I had to say, thank you.
Okay. So then at this time, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners and staff, I'd like to conclude the City of Riverbank's Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, January 19th, 2016, and bid you all adieu and a happy new year.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair, well done.
Thank you.
We will miss you.
Yes, it was in that drawer over there that time, and...
Serve a drink after this one.
Oh my gosh, you know...